That contract is legislative, they've asked me to repair one. I had to run in by Mr. Sittler and see if he had any suggestions. So I didn't have time to get into the actual agenda. I've never actually seen him, so I don't know.
Oh, yes, oh, yes, oh, yes. The Sumner County Commission is now in session pursuant to adjournment. God bless this country, God bless this county, and God bless this commission, this commission. Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Baker Ring will pray tonight.
Let us pray. Thank you gracious Lord for all the blessings that we received this season. Help us to remember the reason for our Christmas season, that is the birth of your son, Jesus Christ. Watch over these proceedings tonight and guide those of us who are on the commission to do what we believe is the best thing to do in your name, in us, in Christ's name, amen.
Could you just repeat the pledge?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. Madam Clerk, call the row. All right, we have twenty-two members present tonight. Commissioner Sullivan called me this afternoon and he is on his way back presently from Atlanta, where he was involved in a family funeral there, so he will not be with us tonight. The majority will remain the same at thirteen votes and two-thirds vote will remain the same. Do I have, I want to remind everyone before we ask for approval of the agenda that the Cotton Town issue, and I know many of you may be here to speak on the Cotton Town issue, but it is, has been removed from the agenda by the Legislative Committee. No action on the Cotton Town community property will be dealt with tonight. Commissioner Mansfield, did you have something you wanted to? All right, good, okay. We have twenty-three present tonight then. Is that working okay, Terry? All right. For some reason, you weren't recorded earlier. Do we have an approval of the agenda with the removal of the Cotton Town issue? Is there a second? All right. All right, that is the twenty-two, twelve, twelve. We will put that under, if you will, under Legislative. All right, we have a motion by, who made the motion? Motion by? All right, go ahead.
I'm sorry, I was going to speak to Budget Chairman Schoeff about this, but the Audit Committee meeting went a little longer than I think we anticipated. I'd like to make a motion to add under budget a five thousand dollars for the Portland Senior Citizens Center. Last month, due to time, we did not talk about the charitable donation giving. We ended up grouping and approving everything at the end of the meeting and there was three organizations that got cut on there and I would like to add a five thousand dollar for, to be added back to spend to the Portland Senior Center.
All right, is there a second? This is certainly being added to the agenda, so it would need to be a majority vote. And I will say, I've talked to the director at the Portland Center, he understood our reasoning on that issue. I was on the committee that oversaw that. Motion's been made on that and a second by Commissioner Nguyen. This will require a majority vote to do this without going through committee. Okay, this is being added without going through committee. All right, Madam Chairman, would you place that on the board?
Yes, I actually had two notes, I'm going to get back in queue because I want to add something to the agenda, but I was just gonna.
Well, let's just go ahead. My suggestion would be go ahead and take a vote.
That's fine.
All right, the yeses have it, it will be added under budget, if you will. Now, that was one issue.
Yes, sir.
The five thousand dollars for Portland Community Center.
Yes, sir, that's what I, that's, that was the motion, yes, sir.
So now we have a motion and a second for the agenda as amended. All right.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, so one item that I'd like to add is something that we discussed in Legislative and we deferred it, but since, I've since had some discussion with a couple of our judges and I would like to add a resolution that's sitting on everybody's desk relevant to bonds for judicial magistrates. I'd like to put that to under Legislative.
All right, motion's been made and seconded by whom? Okay, Commissioner Nguyen. I did not get one of those, if you have an extra one, I'd like to have a copy of that. This is another item that's being added before, before it has been before the committee. However, this is something that really is timely, that probably needs to be dealt with right away, so let me hear a voice vote on adding this to the agenda. Those in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose, like sign. Okay, please add that also to the agenda, that will be under budget. All right, hopefully, that's all of the agenda items to be added. All in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose, like sign, and we have an agenda. And a consent agenda. Approval of the consent agenda as amended, motion by Commissioner Mansfield, second by Commissioner Schmidt. All in favor signify by saying aye, oppose, like sign. Like sign.
Just, just a clarification on when we add items to the agenda, it's my understanding, and I'm looking at the rules, that they need a, that they need sixteen votes instead of just a majority? Okay. Okay, well, the copy I'm looking at says two-thirds.
And I think, without a division of the House, I think it was unanimous.
Well, it was, one of, one of the items only got fifteen votes, so that was my question.
Yes, the county attorney would like to speak to this issue.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Commissioner Becker, our rules for a very long time said two-thirds. It's something I never knew I needed to check into. Once we started looking into the rules, I found where the TCA was very clear that to add something to the agenda requires just a majority vote of those present and we changed the rules to match what those are. You must be looking at an outdated version.
All right, do I have a motion to approve the minutes of November the fourteenth? Motion and a second, all in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose, like sign. And at this time, we have the recognition of the public if. Yes, how many do we have? All right, we have, we have eleven people who would like to speak to an issue on the agenda and we have several students here and other people being recognized and without objection, if there's anybody objection, we'll stay with the agenda as adopted, but I'd like to go ahead and take care of certificates reported to the chair before that, is that all right with them?
We hear everything from the back of the room.
All right. If you have used, if you have used your mic, would you please cut it off? It is interfering with other people hearing. Okay. The clerk will attempt to take care of that.
Should be set on like nine or ten.
We.
There you go.
We may selectively want to cut something out, but. All right, without objection, we're going to honor a few students so they can be on their way. I'm sure they don't want to be here till eleven o'clock tonight. Okay. That would be good. First of all, I'd like for the boys soccer team at the Merrill High Magnet School to come forward, if you would, stand right up here with me. We want to get a good look at you with the coaches and any other school officials that happen to be here. Yep, some can come over here, guys. I promise you, this is the quietest this bunch has been in a long time. I am very proud tonight to honor the soccer program at the Magnet School. They have put Sumner County, the total soccer program, on the map. They have very quickly become known all across the state and have certainly been a credit to Sumner County. Now, the boys soccer team that we have here tonight, you're looking at a group of young men who have gone to the state Final Fours twice and have, matter of fact, a number of people told me last year that it was supposed to be a building year, but they went to the state playoffs. They certainly have done very, very well. And the coach provided me with a little information about them. Trevor Keel, where is Trevor? I saw him. Okay, Trevor, come here and. All right, Trevor here, I want to speak about him just a moment and Trevor happens to be the nephew of a former commissioner here in the last commission, Shelley Tucker, and is a great, great young man. Trevor was one of the top center backs in the state among all classes. Trevor's twenty-two senior year, he made all district first team, all region first team, Sumner County Defender of the Year, and all mid-state second team. Trevor was also nominated and played in the THSSCA, TACA Soccer All-Star Game for the West team. He scored twelve goals on the season and earned valedictorian of his 2022 class. Is Brayden, Brayden come up? Brayden was the junior captain. He was center midfield for Brayden's 2022 junior year. He made all district first team, all region first team, all Sumner County second team, and scored fifteen goals on the season. Andrew, take a step forward, okay. Drew was the junior goalkeeper. He had an amazing season, posting eight shutouts on the year. He led the team to a one-zero shutout win in sectional game on the road at Chattanooga School for Arts and Sciences, which punched their ticket to the state for the second straight year. He made a massive save in the state tournament opening game against Harpeth in a PK shootout to give the Hawks the win and advanced to the Final Four. He made all region first team and all Sumner County first team. Brody Hitchcock. Freshman, freshman forward, wrote his 2022 freshman year, he scored twenty goals on the season and, including a hat trick in the region semifinal win over Watertown. He made all region first team, all Sumner County second team. I didn't see Jake, is Jake, Jake is here, okay, come forward, Jake. Jake Burton was senior captain center back. Jake helped lead the Hawks' defense to a total of eight shutouts on the year and was a huge reason, reason the boys team qualified for back-to-back state tournaments. He made all district first team, all Sumner County second team. Coach Daniel Brooks, and where he's got, coach, you come forward, was named the Sumner County Coach of the Year for the second year in a row. This award would not be possible without the help and support of his assistant coaches, Sebastian Brauner, Riley Sheen, and Ben Walker. I'm assuming they are not here tonight.
They're working tonight.
Okay. Let me say too, that Coach Brooks, what would we do in Sumner County without volunteer parent coaches? He is not a school employee, he is a volunteer parent coach and has accomplished this with the soccer team. I think, did all of you get medals? All right, I'd like for the coach to say just a word or two, if he will.
Excuse me, first and foremost, I want to thank the Sumner County Commission for having us here tonight and taking time out of y'all's busy schedule and acknowledging these gentlemen for such an amazing accomplishment, what they did. Couldn't have said it much better with some of these accolades here, but Trevor and Jake seniors, two seniors, just huge impact that they had on the boys this year, setting the standard for what we needed to do to get to that next level and to make it to the state again. As Mr. Hyde said, halfway through the year, we thought this may have been a rebuilding year, but it's all the testament to hard work pays off and I really talk to the boys about that a lot, but what they did is continue to work, stay at it, a great life lesson, I thought, and they just went above and beyond in the game on the road in the region. I just think that was huge for us to get into the state tournament again, but all the accolades go to them. I can put them in the right direction, but ultimately, they're the ones that have to step up and put in the work and I could not be more proud of such a great group of young men and, you know, putting the program in the right direction and continue to, you know, represent Merrill High in the best way possible, so thank you so much and.
Appreciate it.
You, Mr. Hyde, and thank y'all all for having us here tonight.
Do we have a motion to recognize these young men? I'm being the soccer fan he is, I'm going to accept the motion from Commissioner Becker. Second by Commissioner Holmes, all in favor signify by saying aye. Okay. Coach Brooks. Would you come forward? I forgot to give you your proclamation. Thank you. Girls' soccer team, would you come forward? While they're coming forward, I just want to say, especially since we have a commissioner here who works in the schools and as a resource officer, that we, we quite often hear about all the negative things about young people and what a good example of many, many other young people that we have in the county that have accomplished good things and we're very proud of, of these young ladies. Their accolades are unbelievable. Want you to take a good look at these young ladies, you're looking at state champions, not once, but twice, back-to-back. This team went twenty-two and one, which is a program high in season wins. They were thirteen and zero in Class A in the state. They surrendered one goal in Class A competition in the state. Now, they played teams that were beyond their classification, but they scored a hundred and thirty-nine goals and surrendered only seventeen during the season. They closed out their season campaign in the state tournament, scoring nine goals and surrendering none to opposing teams. For the second year in a row, they finished first in the state across all soccer classifications in scoring six point oh goals per game. They finished third in the state across all classifications with best record. That's big schools, small schools, whatever. They finished tenth in the state across all classifications in overall defense with just point seven goals allowed per game. For the past two years, they went twenty-six and zero in Class A and have surrendered two goals in Class A competition. For the past two years, the Lady Hawks are thirty-eight, four, and two. And for the past two years, the Lady Hawks are six and zero in state tournament play with eighteen goals and zero surrendered. They have won six straight district and regional titles. The Lady Hawks have made the T double S double A State Soccer Tournament six years in a row. They have two state finalists finishes in 2018 and 2020 and two state championships, twenty-one and twenty-two. I, I am immensely proud of these young athletes and scholars that represent Sumner County so well. Ben, did we give medals to them? Okay, do I have a motion to recognize these young ladies? Commissioner Becker and seconded by Commissioner Wright, all in favor signify by saying aye. Like sign, no one better speak of. Okay. Now, the coach of this team, Coach Bentley, again, is a volunteer parent coach. He's great, we'll probably never let him go. He's got a job here and his, and his real job, he's an attorney, but he's an outstanding coach and I'd like for him to say a few words to you here, if, if he will.
Thank you, Commissioner Hyde. To the commission, thank you for having us tonight. You know, it, it, it's been an honor for the past eleven years to coach at Merrill High. You know, when we started, we didn't even have a field, when I started, but the program's grown in large part due to the support of the commission. We have a great administration, hardworking girls, obviously, and, and a great set of parents, so all the work goes to them, all the, all the accolades go to them. We don't play the game, we just get to coach the game and it's been a joy coaching these girls as well as.
And it's been a joy coaching these girls, as well as many others. But at this time, I'm going to defer over to Captain Senior Mia Maxwell.
My name is Mia Maxwell. I'm a senior here at Merrill Hyde, and I've played with the Lady Hawks for five years. This team has always meant a lot to me. Being at Merrill Hyde, you're stuffed into such a tight-knit community that when you play on a sports team, it's even smaller. But that was never a negative thing. Every single year, there's been a unique sense of family. We say goodbye to our seniors and we welcome our new girls with open arms. The last five years of my life, these families are what have gotten me through hard times. We're all always there for each other, and this is a big reason why we do as well as we have at state in the past years. Last year, we made history, and this year, we left a legacy. These memories will stick with our team, coaches, parents, and especially our seniors forever. I want to say thank you to our coaches, parents, and all the supporters we have to have this season. We couldn't have accomplished yet another state title without the help of all of these people. And thank you to the county commission for having us here tonight.
So, one particular player, also a senior, was a senior captain this year. She was a captain last year. She's, I think she had 27 goals on the year. Started at center mid. She was the all-district Player of the Year. She made all-Sumner County first team. She made the THSCA Senior All-Star Team for all classifications across the state. She really set the tone for this team. She's been an excellent leader, an excellent player. So, a special shout-out to Mary McElwain.
We're thankful for such a great coaching staff and thankful for these young ladies and what they represent. Thank you very much, and we appreciate you coming tonight. Do you want to introduce some assistants?
So, assistants are in the back. One of them looks like a player. So, Assistant Coach Emily Boone, she's a graduate of Merrill Hyde. She was a three-year player at Mariville, joined us a couple of years ago. So, she's been a big asset. Also, Mikey Oaks, he's been with me all 11 years. He primarily takes care of the keepers. He played at Belmont University. And then, we have Megan Riwa, eight years with the team. She played locally at Hendersonville and then at UT Martin. And we unfortunately are allowing her to retire this year. She's spent her time, but it's been good to have such a good coaching staff intact for such a long time. Thank you.
Hopefully, we have all of the National Merit semifinalists present with us tonight. Would you come forward if you are a Merit semifinalist? Coach Bentley, I did it again. It's a real honor for me to recognize these young people. I read with a lot of interest in the paper about each one and then what it took to get where they are. Less than 1%, less than 1% of all high school graduates qualify for this prestigious honor. So, you're looking academically in Sumner County at the cream of the crop. Six have been named from Sumner County. I think we have four here tonight, but six have been named from Sumner County. They were screened by taking an SAT National Merit Scholarship qualifying test to become a finalist, and the student and a high school official had to provide information about the semifinalist academic record, participation in school, and community activities, demonstrated leadership abilities, employment, honors, and awards. These students have represented the highest academic achievement in Sumner County. And I'd like to recognize them. At this time, we have one student from Sumner County Middle College, which is a new program here in Sumner County. It gives students a very quick start on college. George Boyt, would you raise your hand, George? Now, do you have someone in this group that you know? No? He is the son of Commissioner Boyt. All right. Pardon me if I mispronounce this. Rytoro Math? Okay. That was very close.
Yes, it was.
From Hendersonville High School. Jack Seager from Hendersonville High School. I don't think Jack is here. I know Jack. Colin Fransell is not here. Sophia Bricker. Are you Sophia? Okay. And Nicholas Keller from Merrill Hyde and Merrill Hyde and the Middle College and from Hendersonville High School. Let's give them one more round of applause. Yes, I will accept a motion from the mother. Is there a second?
I'll make the motion.
Second from Commissioner Miller. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Thank you, guys, very much. We are very, very proud of you and what you represent for Sumner County schools. Thank you. Now, we have the Veterans Service Report under Report of the Chair. Pardon me, recognition of the public. I would like to slide by that, but we will gladly hear from everyone who wants to speak. Now, I will remind anyone here that the Cotton Town issue has been removed from the agenda, but a motion was made to allow you to speak if you want to speak to that. Randall Pomeroy, if you would state your name and your address, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name's Randall Pomeroy, and I reside at 116 Long Hollow Way. And I'm here tonight on Resolution 221203, and I originally planned to come tonight and bring my most compelling arguments in favor of support of this resolution, which prohibits the use of eminent domain for the taking of private property for greenways. But as my wife and I talked at length about what's happened in our community around Long Hollow and Station Camp over the past few years, Upper Station Camp Road, the ugliness, some of the dread, even hostility, some of the things that have permeated the back-and-forth arguments on this issue, I decided to approach tonight a little differently. And I pray and I ask God to guide what is shared tonight and what is heard tonight so that the words spoken and received might help to create a real sense of peace that we can share and celebrate rather than an argument that some of us can win and others lose. And so, I come to you tonight in humility and in love. I love our community. I love my neighbors, and I have a deep agape love for all of you who spend your time and energy governing our county and serving our public. Rather than putting forward this best argument, instead, I'm going to humbly ask that you grant us all a gift tonight. After all, it is the season of giving, and the gift that I'm asking for is the gift of peace. It's right, peace. I believe with all my heart that it's within the power of this commission tonight to give residents of Sumner County a sense of peace regarding an issue that has caused really nothing but turmoil for years. It's an issue of whether or not a person's private backyard is protected from seizure by some power within government to be given over to the general public for a broader use. Now, most of you might not feel this threat is going to happen to any of you, nor do you feel that it may be happening to any of your constituents. After all, who would ever propose, say, taking all of the backyards around the lake on one of the peninsulas like Fairview Plantation for a beautiful greenway? And certainly, it would be enjoyed by all the people living in apartments on Greenlee or those people living in cluster homes that don't have any sort of green space. But who among us could ever conceive of that, the taking of someone's waterfront property, taking it away from them and giving it over for common use? It sounds rather outrageous, but it's not so outrageous. In fact, there's one person who sits among you tonight in this chamber, a fellow commissioner who's living under this exact threat. She and her husband have had their waterfront property besieged, and granted, it's waterfront on Station Camp Creek, but it's the same water that flows into the lake around Fairview Plantation. But I promise not to make arguments, but rather to ask for this gift, so I'm going to humbly ask each of you now for the gift of peace by voting in favor of this resolution. With such a vote, you can give your neighbors the peace of mind that it comes with knowing that they're no longer under the threat of a tyrannical power that can seize their backyard where their children or their grandchildren are supposed to be able to play. And they'll have the peace of knowing that no one has retained the power to turn their backyard into a public thoroughfare with hundreds or thousands of strangers, taking away their privacy and their security. And bestowing that gift on your neighbors is within your power tonight, and I ask you please to open your hearts and realize how beneficial this gift could be in establishing peace in our community. It's a peace that lowers tension, raises trust, speaks volumes regarding the kindness we're willing to show toward one another in our efforts to self-govern. And so, I ask each of you to consider granting this resolution as a gift of peace. And I ask those who are in favor of the resolution to receive support from those who might not, they might be struggling over whether to support this or not, but I ask that you all accept their gift as a true gesture of peace, not as some victory to be gloated over, but as a peace offering between each of you. And I pray in all sincerity that if you cannot with your vote grant this simple gift to your constituents and your neighbors, that you clearly articulate why you believe this authority to seize your neighbor's property cannot be surrendered, why you believe that it's a good and right thing as an elected official, you retain and you exercise this authority over private property, the property of your neighbors. And I ask this in all sincerity so that the people from your district will know that you believe in this kind of authority over their property rights, and they can decide if that best represents their interests and desires in our system of self-governance the next time they vote. I pray that all of you are blessed this holiday season by the grace and truth and ultimate peace that comes from our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. And I pray, like Paul, that your love for one another grows ever stronger, overcoming all the obstacles of this thing we call self-governance, and it plays an ever-increasing role in our government, establishing peace in our community over the coming months and years. And I thank you all in advance for this gift. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you for your kind words, Mr. Pomeroy. Dwight Dixon, if you would give us your name and address, please, sir.
Thank you, Commissioners. Dwight Dixon, I live on 1914 Liberty Lane. I'm a lifetime resident of Sumner County. We have been at our address, where our farm is, since back in the early 60s. We still farm it. The reason I am here to talk to you tonight is our family, my brothers and sisters, sold half of the property to the school system where Liberty Creek High School is today. We have been there since back in the 60s. It was our home, set about where the high school sits. I'm not opposed to progress. I've seen it. We moved from Hendersonville Farm there. Houses ran us out. We're where we're at today, and it's happening again, but that's just the nature of things. But they sold the property to the school system, and then we heard word the sewer was coming. And I saw surveyors out, not ask if they could come survey. I just, one day, looked out, and there's a survey crew out in the middle of my field. I went over, I said, "What's going on?" They said, "We're surveying for the sewer line." No call from anybody. And so, I said, "Well, okay." So, I called the county mayor, and the surveyors and I talked, and I called him, and I said, "Well, what's going on?" He said, "Well, we got to run sewer for the school." I said, "Fine, I'll give you easement to the sewer," to the school system and the county. I said, "That's great, I'll give it to you." Time goes by, and they're surveying, and surveying again, and moving it again, and surveying. Finally, a girl shows up and says, "I need to meet you over there with the sewer. We've got an agreement for you to sign." I said, "Okay, I'll meet you over there." She had two documents in her hand. One was a contract for a sewer easement. It was so much money. She said, "Now, here's this one for a sewer easement and a greenway on it." I said, "A greenway? I said, "This is farmland, you can't..." I said, "Nothing was mentioned to me about a greenway." I called the county mayor. He said, "It's a necessity we got to have. It's got to be on there for the water department to access that sewer line." I have two sons that put in sewers in Williamson County, all the big subdivisions, Sumner County. They said they have never seen a sewer line that had to have a road over it unless it was running down the middle of a road. My reason for being here is, I may be old, but I'm not stupid. We have been lied to so many times about the reasons for this, the reasons for that, why we're doing this. We've got to have it. If somebody would have been truthful with me one time and said, "Well, we're going to run the sewer, we're going to put a greenway on it so people can walk." That ain't what we got. We got to have it for the water, for the trucks to get to the sewer. That's what we got. And never got a reason for anybody for saying why they thought it would be good to put a greenway in somebody's backyard. Back then, nice, 300... Back then, nice, $300,000 home, it's five-acre lot. May have had a swoon pool, I don't know, but then you've got people walking. I got farmland. It's bad enough keeping the four-wheelers out. Creek runs right between our property, constant. People running up and down the creek, running up and down our hayfields. I said, "Now, what's it going to be when you turn loose a greenway for the whole county to use?" So my thing is, developers want to come in here and build subdivisions, let them put the greenways on the property they buy. Don't leave it to the county. What does the county spend, you know, building that greenway or building one they've got or building one they want to run all the way from there to Cotton Town? That's ludicrous. Let the developers build it. Leave the homeowners unless, you know, if I agree to it, fine, but don't shove it down our throats. Please. There's not a person in this room, if there are, I would like to talk to you, that you would want public access in your backyard for people to walk, anybody.
Mr. Dixon, your time is...
Okay. I appreciate it. Please consider personal property. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gold, if you'd give us your address also, please.
Thank you. My name is Jeff Gold. I live at 1117 Upper Station Camp Creek Road. I live about a mile and a half from, back towards Cotton Town, from Mr. Dixon. And I am also here to voice my support for this resolution against taking private property from people who have worked hard to buy it and maintain it. I'm not a member of the oldest family in the area, but my family has lived and farmed on Station Camp Creek for 130 years. And I don't really want my property seized for a greenway. I can't speak for all my neighbors, but I don't know of anybody that really wants this from Long Hollow Pike all the way to Cotton Town. I don't think anybody really wants it. But they can speak for themselves. I can speak for myself, and I can speak for my cousin who has a large farm next to me. He doesn't want a greenway going through his hayfields. Now, I'm all for walking trails. I'm all for green space. I've used the walking trail at Mossright Park in Goodlith Field numerous times. I've used the walking trail at Triple Creek Park in Gallatin. This county owns lots of property. It owns 265 acres where Liberty Creek School is. Why we need 265 acres, I'm not quite sure, but anyway, the county has it. It's my understanding that almost 90 acres of that land was gifted to the county for a park. That's a perfect place for walking trails. Let's have walking trails on land that the county already owns. There's no reason to take people's property and put a greenway up and down Station Camp Creek and go through hayfields and people's farmland. It's just not necessary. So I hope that the commission will support this resolution, and we can have, we can have green spaces and we can have walking trails, but they need to be in the right areas. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Penny Wicker. If you would give us your address also, Ms. Wicker.
My name is Penny Wicker. I live at 221 Bug Hollow Road. And I want to share, I'm here to talk about the greenways also. I want to share a small part of a document called Greenways 101. This can be found on the State of Tennessee website. The document outlines steps and guidelines for planning a greenway. I'm going to share three statements that are exact words included in this document. One is identify landowners and right-of-ways. Two, plan on an average trail width of 25 to 75 feet minimum. In parentheses, the more, the better. Conservation and scenic purposes. Three, discreetly contact landowners. The county pays planners to plan greenways through backyards and farmlands, the very homes and land that people have worked so hard for, all of this being touted as the, for the public good. Eminent domain is being abused when, used to condemn farms and backyards for greenways. I don't want it used in my backyard or yours. It's being funded with transportation grants, parks and recreation funds, and grants from environmental groups, sometimes in conjunction with high-density developer green space. All this information is easily found on the Internet and sadly is on our state website. Commissioners, I hope today you vote in support of stopping eminent domain from being used to run greenways, parks, any kind of trail through private property in Sumner County.
Thank you. Clark Wright, if you would give us your name and address, please.
Clark, excuse me, Clark Wright, 205 County House Road, Cotton Town. Thomas Jefferson believed it was the right to procure property and to use it for one's own enjoyment is essential to the freedom of every person, and our other rights would mean little without those rights of property ownership. Too much property has been taken from the citizens of Sumner County for parks, trails, paths, and greenways, only to open the back door for overcrowding and overdevelopment. I ask that the commission would vote yes for the Private Act to prohibit eminent domain from being used to acquire privately-owned real property as proposed. Thank you.
Thank you. Joanna Daniels, if you would give us your name and address, please.
Hi, Joanna Daniels, 152 North Shadow Haven Way, Hendersonville. I wanted to speak on two things tonight, and that is the Private Act. You know, I moved here in 2018, late 2018, it was actually two days before Christmas. And I started, I started seeing these signs everywhere for a greenway, and I was like, "What, what's going on here?" And so I started looking into this, and I was really surprised to find out that people's property was being taken away. And I started to look into it, and, you know, being new here, I was just blown away, and none of it made sense to me, the excuses why they wanted it. And it didn't even make sense to me. I didn't, I had just moved here. And so I'm just hoping that you guys vote yes on this because, you know, one, I believe that eminent domain is just unconstitutional, and two, I think that especially after what happened in 2019 here, and I'm learning more and more about things that happened even before that, I think it's, it's pretty horrific. So, and then also, I wanted to speak on the budget agenda for the education for LEAP program. And, you know, I just, I wasn't able here, to be here to speak during the budget on last Monday, and I just want you to really realize, and I'm hoping that this doesn't pass tonight, that you stall it for another month, because what had happened was that, you know, the 21st Century Community Learning Centers, which is what LEAP is based on, the funding for LEAP, which is the after-school programs. It is the 21st Century Community Learning Centers. And what they have to do is they have to provide a minimum four-week, full-day summer program. And what happened was that when we got the $49 million for ESAR funds, well, the ESAR funds had to be used for summer programs as well. So what has happened is that the schools that had LEAP's funding, ESAR came in and said, "Hey, we're now going to fund this." So then ESAR said, "Oh, well, we displaced that money." So that's where the surplus is coming from. So ESAR had to do summer programs. So the money has been displaced. That's where the surplus and the carryover for this money comes in. So when asked, "Well, we have ESAR funds until 2024. What are we going to do with this displaced money?" Well, it's now going to go, they're going to qualify other schools for LEAP, and then they're going to use the money for those. And so I was like, "Okay." So here's, my thing is, is that after 2024, and ESAR funds is being used, what it's supposed to be used for is the summer programs for schools for learning loss, which it hasn't been proven to help that. And then, then LEAP is going to go into other schools that it's not in right now, and I was told this. So come 2024, when the ESAR funds go away, those schools that have these summer programs that ESAR is now funding, what's going to happen with those schools? And then, last but not least, you want to look at what's being taught in these, these schools with LEAP. So Tennessee, you guys won $501 million from Race to the Top with Obama. And that was back in, I think it was 2010. And that was to fund Common Core here in Tennessee. Well, the 21st Century, you know, Learning Centers is funded by ESSA, which is the Every Student Succeeds Act, which is Obama and the Common Core. And so what you got to look at is this funding has strings attached to that, and what is being taught in these after-school programs might not necessarily be what you want to be taught. We're already fighting curriculum in the schools here, and now we have it in the after-school programs as well. So just, you might want to be careful what you're approving funding for, for these after-school programs for at-risk youth. So just be very careful. Thank you.
Thank you. J.K. Brister, if you would give us your name and address, please.
J.K. Brister, 1489 Upper Station Camp Creek Road. You know, I'm not going to have to talk about Cotton Town tonight because this is about all the rural lands of Sumner County. But it's not just about the rural lands of Sumner County. It's about the evil of governments that are doing something that is truly and wholly And citizens and people in government, especially the last 16 years, not everybody, and not most of you in this room, but this government of Sumner County has bought into a plan. The most patriotic county, I believe, in this state, and I've been to almost every one of them, is literally using designs that Japan, who is a communist country, China, who is a communist country, communist countries seize private property for the public good. They don't have any respect for people who own property unless they're benefiting from it. In Sumner County, everyone here, I'm not nine generations back, and neither are the three or four people in the county that moved there to buy land so they could develop it, so they could leave a legacy to those who are coming after them. Well, they had their 16 years, and elections have consequences. I say that a lot because it was said to me by the last chairman. Well, J.K., elections mean something. They have consequences. Well, I truly believe, and even though I disagree with some people in this room, Mr. Chairman, I'm not going to say anybody's name, I don't disagree with them on everything because everyone in here has told me that they don't agree with stealing private property when there's a 15-foot easement down the road. You want to put a greenway in? Sirs, ma'ams, all y'all? Take the easement that's yours. People might fight you a little bit, but not as much as stealing their land. I've talked to 2,000, in 90 days, almost 2,000 people where I live. None of them want a greenway, especially when they find out what it is. Where we live is a greenway. It's just not a greenway that just anybody willy-nilly can walk through it. But that ain't fair. See, that's what they say to me. Well, that ain't fair. You know what? It ain't my fault that somebody decided to live in a place where every house is a foot apart and they ain't got nowhere to see birds and trees. It's not anyone's fault that owns 50 acres, 200 acres, 5 acres, nothing. It's not our fault, and this commission, I tell you, does not have the right, under God, to steal somebody's land that came from a poor person, worked their butts off, earned the money, and bought 50 acres or 500 acres or 2,000 acres. And some of those few people that bought where we live to develop it for the future will say that, "Well, we're violating their rights." Well, they were violating ours for 16 years, all right? Everybody, property rights are subject to the people ruling. And I can tell you this, my liberty is not worth less than yours, and your liberty is not worth less than anything either, and we need to start being American again. I'm going to say this, I want every one of y'all to watch who votes tonight. Anyone who votes against this resolution is voting for development, they're voting to steal your property, and they're voting for, to do un-American things to the citizen of this county. Thank y'all.
Thank you. Kevin Begert, if you would give us your name and address.
Kevin Begert, 424 A.B. Wade Road. I am really, really excited about tonight, and I'm heartened to hear some of my fellow citizens talk about things like peace and property rights. And I'm going to get to my main topic, but first of all, I'd like to digress for one second. For almost five years, maybe six, Ben Allen has served as our legal advisor here in Sumner County. I never really got to see him in true action, but the last few months I have, and we're going to miss you, Ben, and I appreciate everything you did for this county. Um... That's not coming off my time, is it, Mr. Chairman? The other thing that really warms my heart is to hear fellow citizens talk about property rights and some of the things that a previous speaker talked about. Our founding fathers, when they crafted the Declaration of Independence, the original reading was going to be these God-given rights of life, liberty, and property. I won't get into the details of why it was changed to the pursuit of happiness, but the basic premise has been and always will be, property is a God-given right. It should not be taken by mere humans. But that's not why I'm talking tonight. I wanted to talk a little bit about Resolution 12, 221207. You should have gotten one of these. I also sent an email to everybody. When this resolution went through, first it went through education, then it went through budget, I didn't say... I didn't say too much because I thought it important that it gets to the full complement. Everybody in this commission needs to hear this. The fact that we're going to spend, the Sumner County schools are going to spend $10,500 to send people to the National Association of After-School Programs. If you look at their website, they basically have a dotted line back to Barack Obama's fundamentally transforming America. For a lot of years, I know a lot of people that, that are buried in cemeteries paid heavily to give us what we have. We don't need to fundamentally transform anything. We need third graders to be able to read at grade level. Take that $10,500 and use it for something appropriate. I support after-school programs if it's fundamentally for improving children. But sending six people down to be indoctrinated by an organization that sits just outside the Beltway in, in Virginia, outside of DC, we don't need that propaganda coming here to Sumner County. If you want to do after-school programs, develop them here. We have plenty of brilliant minds in this county that could develop programs much better than some, some woke ideologues up in, in DC. Okay, I, I always digress. You've got my words here. Take a look at it. I seriously recommend you either vote this down or at, at, at least send it back to education and/or budget and ask the school system to strip that out. We don't need to be sending our people down there to be indoctrinated in leftist ideologies. It's here, it's all around this country. Just recently, I saw up in Hamilton County, they're, they're pushing CRT and, and social learning and all that crap. We don't need it here. We have to stop it, nip it in the bud. Send the message to the school system and have them extract that. Thank you very much.
Susie Robinson, if you'd give us your name and address, please.
Susie Robinson, I live at 2695 Long Hollow Pike. Wasn't planning on speaking, I was just coming. I've kind of dropped out of coming after the greenway and everything looked like it was going to be a done deal. But I've lived in the same house for 39 years. All four of my kids went to Beach, graduated there. All of them still live in Sumner County, except for one, who moved from Upper Station Camp because of all this. About 25 years ago, my husband and I bought six acres on Upper Station. Two of our boys built houses next door to each other, forever homes. If they had been transparent, the county, the commissioners that represented them or were supposed to represent them in the beginning, instead of, I won't say lie, but came into their homes and pretended to not know anything about a greenway, they would have given their property for a sewer system. But it didn't happen. I just, I, I don't agree with taking somebody's property. I agree with the people that have gotten up and spoken that had a lot more information than I have. But they're putting the sewer lines in anyway, which are okay. But I, I have a son that still lives there. They're still working on sewer lines. And from what I've been told, they're running into a lot of problems putting them on a floodplain. So I just, I hope y'all vote it, get it sent through here so people's property isn't taken. I live on a main road, and I expect at some point, half of my front yard will probably be gone for widening Long Hollow Pike. Hopefully, I'll be dead and gone by then. I don't plan on moving, but I'll be sitting on my front porch waving to the traffic, I guess.
All right, Ruth Fennel. If you would give us your name and address, please, Ruth.
She's back. Okay, Ruth Fennel, 1049 Blue Jay Way, Gallatin, Tennessee. I'm here to speak in favor of the commission's request for the Private Act concerning blocking the use of eminent domain in taking someone's property for greenways, walkways, trails, et cetera, especially when the people do not want their land used for that purpose. So what I'm going to ask you to do is take a minute. I want you to close your eyes and think about your home. Think about, imagine your home, your land, your property, your yard, your house. Now. Hi, this is Ruth. I'm from the government, and I'm here to help you. I want 75 feet of your lot. Do you even have 75 feet of your lot to give me? It doesn't matter, I'm taking it anyway. I don't care what your fence is, I don't care what your driveway is, I don't care where your sheds are. I want that property, and I'm taking it. Now, in addition to that, I'm also going to have strangers walking on that 75 feet. You don't know who they are, you don't know where they come from, you don't know what they want. But it's okay, because it's not yours anymore. It's mine, and I'm going to let them be there. So what if they accidentally step off the walkway, twist an ankle, break a leg? They were on your property. You're now responsible for those medical bills. What's going through your mind right now? Do you feel good about this? Would you want that to happen to you? I sure wouldn't. I wouldn't want this to happen to me, to my neighbors, or anyone else in Sumner County. And because of the unethical use of the eminent domain process that we've seen in Sumner County over the last several years, we need to proactively stop this process from occurring again and being used for future citizens in Sumner County. I think a majority of us here have seen the negative impact of eminent domain when politicians and officials exceeded their authority for the sake of people who shall remain nameless while couching it as for the greater good. I truly believe that the last several years have proven that there was no other reason for the use of eminent domain on Long Hollow to the Liberty Creek School other than personal and friendships. I believe that putting the sewer line along an environmentally sensitive creek, and in my opinion, stealing, which is another word that's been used this evening, under the guise of it's for the children, when I believe it was actually for the benefit of developers and politicians who were growing Sumner County for personal benefit. Anyone with common sense knew that this would have been easier, cleaner, quicker, and cheaper to run the sewer lines for the school buildings only along the road that was needing to be torn up anyway and repaid. There was already an easement there, as has been discussed. But that wouldn't fit into the plans of the people doing this. So what do we have to do to make sure that that does not happen again? Because of the situation, we still have a sewer line that's under construction, as has been mentioned. We have trucks having to come in and pump sewage from these schools. We have bathrooms with overflowing toilets. And these are all products of these decisions being made due to personal greed and just because it could be done. Just because it can be done doesn't mean it should be done. John Adams, in a discussion in 19, in, excuse me, 1787, said, "The moment the idea is admitted into society that property is not as sacred as the laws of God, and that there is not a force of law and public justice to protect it, anarchy and tyranny commence. If thou shall not covet and thou shall not steal where not commandments of heaven, they must be made invaluable precepts in every society before it can be civilized or made free." I and others stand before this board and the state legislators to ask that we want a civilized and free society, whereas John Adams believed property is sacred and protected by the rule of law, not the victim of the laws. In the past, decisions have been made by people saying one thing and doing the opposite. So it's reasonable to, to assume that promises made today cannot be trusted to be kept unless protections that John Adams spoke of are clearly set out under the rule of law. In England, a king, everything belonged to the king. All land belonged to the king. One of the things that set America apart was a man's home is his castle. That land belonged to the individual in America, and that's where we became the United States of America. Let's set up this rule of law that's going to protect and hold property ownership by the citizens as sacred. And let's make that founding principle a matter of fact. Thank you.
Katie Brown, if you would please give us your name and address.
Good evening, I'm Katie Brown. I'm at 107 Timberline Drive in Henderson, Middle Tennessee. But I come to you tonight as the Assistant Director of Schools for Student Supports and speaking on behalf of the agenda item for the LEAPs after-school programming. The, I'm happy that I'm speaking last because I can answer some questions that may have been brought up before you. And some of these were answered in the Budget Committee, where this passed, I think, was unanimously. But first, the conference in question is not the conference that the staff people are attending. So that answers that question. We're not going to the National After-School Alliance Conference. And the LEAPs funding comes from the lottery winnings that are unclaimed. And so it is state money. And these are licensed daycare programs by the state of Tennessee. There is a 21st century after-school model that just means that the program is meant to be enrichment and not daycare. It's meant to provide opportunities for kids that wouldn't necessarily have access to those things. If you think about middle school, our middle schools typically get out early, 2:30 or 3 o'clock. Sometimes they're the earliest school in their community that gets out. And if you know anything about middle schoolers, entertaining them after school is difficult and sometimes very costly. If you're going to sign them up for after-school lessons, for sports, or anything like that, it can cost a significant amount of money. And not everybody is interested in the same thing. So at these after-school programs, we're able to provide a wide variety of things. After tutoring and homework help happens, we do things like baking, we do robotics, we have STEM activities, arts and crafts. Things like that are happening in our, in our middle school after-school programs, which is what the, this program is funded by. And our parents are very much engaged. And I would say that if we end up having to, to close our program or limit it in some way, you will know that because there will be 400 students worth of parents that will have something to say about that. So the Unity Program's been in operation since 1999. I was actually the very first site manager for our Unity after-school program. I helped open the program at Rucker Stewart Middle School. I'm very proud of that. I also opened the program at Hawkins Middle School and at Merrill Hyde. And they were built as prevention programming. That's why they fit under my office, because we do prevention programming, whether that's substance abuse prevention, or violence prevention, or even the Family Resource Center is a part of my office. So we're trying to help kids be equipped and ready to school, ready for school, so that they can perform to their best ability. And some of that means making sure that they're safe and not getting into trouble after school. The hours of 3 to 6 are the times that young adolescents, middle schoolers, are most likely to find trouble. Parents are not home from work typically from 3 to 6 in the afternoon. And if a kid goes home and gets off the bus, some students will get right to work and get their homework done and, and behave themselves and watch educational programming on TV. And some will not. They will find other ways to entertain themselves. And that is the reason for this model of after-school programming, is to keep students at school, give them snack, give them more adult interaction where they can get their homework done, they can get assistance with academics where they need it, and they're in a safe place. And they also have the opportunity to learn how to play the piano, play the drums. We've had guitar classes, we've had dance classes, we do drama. It varies from school to school, from semester to semester. I would invite any of you to come and visit an after-school program. I'm very proud of them. Our parents really enjoy them, they're, they're, they're a godsend, and they're very cheap. $50 a semester, if they're able to pay that, I would say is the best deal going right now. So happy to answer if there's any questions when the time is appropriate. But I just wanted to be here and sort of, sort of clear up some inconsistencies between information that I have shared, being the person that oversees the program, and information that's come from the public. So thank you very much, have a good evening.
Thank you. That concludes the recognition of the public. I will say at this time that the number under A of reporter chair, number one, and number three, and number four are merely for your information. That will take us to reporter county officials, and 11. Mr. Brown.
I was just wanting to ask, Ms. Brown, you said that they're not going to this in-service?
Not going to that conference, that was the name they had information.
Okay, so is this money going to be recycled back into the fund?
Mr. Brown, if you will, let's wait until the term of discussion, and then we'll, of that issue. All right. Under reporter county officials, 11A is for your information. B is notaries, and I'll ask the clerk to put that on the board. Do we have a motion for the notaries since we've already elected them? And a second. All right, all in favor, signify by saying aye. All right, and we have elected them individually on the board, too. The reporter standing committees, committee on committees.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just wanted to clarify a little bit, a statement that was made last month, that there was a conflict between Mr. Givance's appointment to the Airport Authority Board and the Gallatin City Charter, due to the board supposedly being a public office. Per the Gallatin City Attorney, that statement was false as this board does not meet the legal definition of a public office. So I wanted to correct that on the record since that was brought up last month. First slate is on solid waste board, six-year term. Kenny Mary recommendation was Gary Zhu, Jerry W. Harris, and Scott McElhaw. And I so moved to group and approve all three of those.
Motion's been made, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Pomeroy. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, like, say aye.
At this committee, one-year term. Committee recommended Commissioner Robert Brown, Commissioner Chrissy Miller, Commissioner Jeremy Mansfield, Citizen Todd Alexander, and Citizen Gina Carpenter. And I moved to group and approve.
A motion and second has been made. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, like, say aye.
Regional Planning Commission, the committee on committees moved forward. Commissioner Nguyen with a negative recommendation not to be placed on the Regional Planning Commission.
All right, I think that we will end up with a division of the House on this. So I would ask that the clerk places on the board as a yes or no vote. Let's have a motion on this, or we may not even have it on the board. All right, motion by, was it Commissioner Moss? Oh, Commissioner Harrison. And a second by Commissioner, who seconded that? Okay, Commissioner Lambert. Yes, a yes vote is for approval, and a no vote is not. Oh, pardon, okay. Commissioner Nguyen is first. Commissioner Nguyen. Commissioner Nguyen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I realize I've received a negative recommendation on this, and in committee, there wasn't a lot of discussion as to why the negative recommendation outside of, I think, Commissioner Mansfield, as well as Commissioner Teachner indicated something about just the location of where I live as the reason being. So, I do appreciate Commissioner Teachner for reaching out at some point last month and having a conversation, but that was the only person I talked to on that committee. And then there was no other real discussion as to, as to why I would need to be excluded from that committee. So, my question to the committee is, is just, what, what's the criteria? I mean, is location-based, is that the best we, we have as far as trying to determine who's best to serve on committees? So the question would be, what, what criteria do we use? And I'd love to hear from another committee members as to, to why the negative recommendation.
Oh, I will let the chair of that committee answer that question.
Commissioner Rogers is in the queue. I don't know if he wanted to let him speak, or...
All right, I'm assuming I'm recognized. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I can say as the Commissioner of the 5th District, I would like to make sure that there's representation of the northern part of the county. We only have six Commissioners, and at the top of the hill, as we like to refer to us as, and 18 at the bottom. So I think it would need to be a diverse representation of the county. That's just my opinion for the 5th District.
Thank you. Anyone else choosing to respond? As chairman, you want to respond or not?
Mr. Chairman, I would say the reason, the only reason why, from, from my individual vote, was because I spoke with Commissioner Nguyen. He, seems like he really cares about his constituents, and I didn't have any problems with that, except we spoke, it wasn't about where the, can I, can I, can I address him, sir? I can't. It seems like that, that it was mostly around, I didn't care where he lived, I didn't care if he lived what part of the county, but my, the citizens that I represent would like larger land as we go forward in developing our, our county. And so, that was really, my entire decision was based on that. Didn't have any negative feeling about him, except for he just said that, he said that he would be good with whatever it said, that, you know, whatever, whatever the law was, but he, he lives on a half-acre lot, and he said that he likes that. Completely understand, it's just that my constituents don't like that from every single door I knocked on. So I just wanted to say I can't support that simply because of the lot size of, of just that discussion. So, otherwise, everything was good with me, so, so you know. Thank you.
Commissioner Becker.
Yeah, just a couple of questions. One question is, and I don't have, if I do somewhere, just let me know, what other Commissioners or what districts, I guess, are already represented by members already on the Planning Commission? If, if it's a concern about, you know, having that proper representation? Mr. Chairman, I'm addressing you, but you can defer that to anyone else?
Mr. Chairman.
So, I'll answer that question. Commissioner David Klein lives over in the Castalian Springs, kind of Bethpage area of Gallatin, in District 6. And Commissioner Miller lives in District 24, representing the rural areas of Shackle Island. And I know that Commissioner Rogers had actually, was at one point nominated for this committee, and he represents the northern of the county, as far as the rural districts there. But, you know, this is a county-commissioned planning district, in my opinion, not a city-commissioned planning district. So, my preference is, I'm gonna, I'm gonna vote for somebody who represents the most rural aspects, that is going to be sensitive to rural, you know, the encroachment of development on rural areas, and not somebody who has necessarily a majority of a city or part of that. So, that is, that is part of my reasoning for that, so, does that answer your question?
Yeah, so, so District 6 and District 24?
Correct. You got Shackle Island, and then...
Castalian Springs.
Yes. And we're looking...
Bethpage area. Okay, and then my, thank you. And then my next question is, I didn't get to, to watch the, the video of it, but like, I was on the, the Committee, Committee on Committees last year, year, two or three years, but how, who, who brought forth Commissioner Nguyen's name as a nominee that it got on that agenda to then get a negative recommendation?
The county mayor nominated, three months in a row. So we wanted to bring it to the floor for just an up or down vote.
I got you.
Settle the matter.
All right, thank you.
Commissioner Pomeroy.
Yeah, I've just been trying to, to find who, are those the only two currently sitting? Who else do we have sitting on that? Just those two Commissioners? Thank you.
I'll ask the clerk to place this on the board. A yes vote will be to approve the mayor's recommendation. A no vote will be not to approve it. With 15 negative votes, the nomination is declined by the commission.
E-911 Board, the county committee, the Committee on Committees approved unanimously to move forward Ben Harris, so with a positive recommendation, I so move.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like, say aye.
The Committee of Committees voted to move forward Allen Driver with a negative recommendation for the E-911 Board.
All right. Let's place that on the board, Madam Clerk.
Need a motion and a second first.
All right, motion's been made by Commissioner Ring, and a second's been made by Commissioner Lamp. Commissioner Becker.
Yeah, just, just a little bit of clarification on the background for this, what the committee's thought process was of making this a negative. I guess, I know Mr. Driver was, was an ex-Commissioner, but I guess this would have served as a citizen representative, representative, and then, well, what, what was the basis for the negative? That's my question.
I, I can't speak for any of the other committee members, but I personally cannot vote for somebody to be on an unelected board who I didn't feel represented to the citizens' interests, and I started on this commission for four years, so for me, it's just a matter of perspective. That's my answer.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you clearly. You said you don't, you don't feel that he represented...
I personally cannot vote for somebody who I didn't feel represented to the center's best interest based on the votes as an elected official, so I'm not willing to put somebody on an unelected board as a citizen when I didn't agree with their, their votes personally, so that's just my perspective. So I'll be voting no on this nomination.
I'll ask the clerk to place that on the board for a yes or no vote. Commissioner Nguyen.
Mr. Chairman, is it possible to get the other committee members to weigh in on why the negative recommendation? I know we heard from Mr. Mansfield, but that's one perspective, so I would love to hear the other, other feedback and comment.
They may choose not to, because they've had their committee meeting and discussion, but I'll ask if any of them are on the committee, want to speak, you may raise your hand, and I'll recognize you. Otherwise, you will not have to speak.
It would just help me out, because I don't know Mr. Driver, so I don't...
Commissioner Genon.
Mr. Chairman, when I looked at Mr. Driver on there, I don't have anything personal against Mr. Driver. He was a Commissioner for several years, but he's going to represent as a citizen, and I feel like we have other citizens in the county that might be appropriate as well, and give them an opportunity. And I felt like being a Commissioner, then a Commissioner, as a Commissioner, he, he may not have the citizen approach to it, and so I felt like it would be best to get someone that is a, other than Mr. Driver, but it was nothing personal. Thank you.
And I don't see anyone else, Commissioner Teachner.
I'll speak to that. That was similar to my understanding, but I don't have anything against Mr. Driver at all, but I just felt like that if I'm voting for someone on a board, it didn't have anything to do with him, how he would vote or anything like that, it just, it came down to the fact that I thought we needed less bureaucracy type, like, in, you know, kind of more and more of the, of the same folks through, and I wanted to see some different people that hadn't served. And if we have a citizen, I thought it would be a great moment for other people to serve on that, that board. So that was, that was my reasoning behind it.
Nothing against him.
Mr. Chairman, if there's nobody else in the queue, I'll...
Commissioner Harris.
Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, I just got a question. Is it, is this a proper time to make a alternative nominee for this position?
Well, I think we need to vote this one down, and then if you want to...
Okay, but we can still do that after the vote, if...
It's, it's a nomination from the county mayor, so it's not a problem.
You can, oh, it is a layer, so...
It is not, it's not a committee, commission.
Forget everything I said. All right.
If, I, I would like to, if I may, you know, I've been up here for five years, Mr. Chairman, and I've never seen anyone ask why they weren't picked. It's the first time. So it, what this reminds me of is when groups of individuals separate off in a sports match, and there's a captain of each team, and players are picked based on who the captain feels is the best person, help them achieve the goal of moving the ball down the field. And I feel that's no different here in this process. Members are picked based on who can help accomplish the goals, in my opinion, of the majority of the commission, that the hard-working taxpayers voted in to represent their interest. And that is the goal of who the Committee on Committee feels, and the commission feels can help them move the ball down the field according to the majority of those who are elected in this body, and that's just my opinion.
Yeah, I, I don't mind staying here as long as you want to stay here, but this is really going to end up a yes or no vote, but Commissioner Pomeroy.
Well, just, since we are just giving opinions, I too have served the same amount of time as my Commissioner who just smoked, just spoke, four years and now four months. I had a four-year gap in there, but I personally don't remember so many negative, I, I don't know if I can ever remember negative recommendations, this, in this many, getting sent to the floor. You know, so, these have always kind of come in and come and gone, and we rely on our committee. We've done that in a passing thing. Obviously, none of us were on that committee, so it's hard of us, but I, from what I don't, I don't understand is, you know, we, not on this one, but when we ask, what were your qualifications, or what process do we do? The only thing I would ask is that the Committee on Committees, whenever they're going to go through these processes, have some uniform standard of what they're looking for when they pick these boards. Four months now, it seems like we've had arguments back and forth on all kinds of selections, from library boards to just all kinds of boards. And I think some of that's just because we don't have anything uniformed on, you know, what we do, why we do it, who we vote yes to, who we vote no to, and that leads to speculation and discourse, when people think that there are no set of rules, or, you know, multiple times, it's been asked, what was your criteria? And, and I think three straight meetings now, months, when we've had somebody stipulation of, nobody's been able to give what the criteria was, what process we used. So, that just leads to this.
Commissioner Roger. All right, there's no one else in the queues, so the clerk will put, in any event, the matter on the board. All right.
Final member of the E-911 Board is Commissioner Terry Wright, and I so move.
Second, second. No one's in the queues, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like, say aye.
That's all, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Education Committee.
2212-03.
Okay. Health and Emergency Services.
No report, Mr. Chairman.
General Operations Committee.
No report, Mr. Chairman.
Highway Committee.
No report, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. And I knew this was going too smoothly. Legislative.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. 2212-03 is a, says, reads, approving a private act for the county of Sumter County, Tennessee, which would authorize prohibiting imminent domain from being used to acquire privately-owned real property for parks, trails, paths, or greenways for walking, running, hiking, bicycling, or equestrian use unless the privately-owned real property is parallel to, runs directly along the length of, and extends on the same direction as a highway, road, or street. Before I make a motion, I want to explain this a little bit. Tonight, we have a unique opportunity to do the, the right thing for the right people, for the right reasons, at the right time. This is something that I tried eight times previously to get the previous commission to vote on, and I was denied that opportunity eight times. So this will be the ninth time that I brought it before this legislative body. I hope that is the, the one that does the trick. You, you've had a chance to read what this resolution does and does not do, but I just wanted to quickly reiterate what it, this, the goal of this resolution is to restrict Sumter County from using imminent domain to acquire private property against the wishes, desires, or will of private property owners, for the reasons stated in this resolution. And I, I wanted to say what this resolution, or this amendment, Private Act, does not do. It does not in any way prohibit greenways, et cetera, on private property with consent. So make that clear. Nor does it prohibit planned-use developments, which are PUDs, homeowners associations, businesses, governments, schools, et cetera, from having any of the above when consent is given. It does not in any way stop or prohibit the condemnation of any land for public utilities, such as sewer, water, electric, et cetera, and private land or private property. But this, and this resolution is not even anti-greenway. It is pro-private property rights. I mean, that is the function of what we're doing here. It's just when you start talking about something that belongs to somebody else is where I draw the line, and I've heard a lot of people say, well, the commission voted this down in 2019. Not true. What the commission voted for was the foundation for a greenway called GeoBlock. And it is a, the foundation for, it's a very expensive product, that's unnecessary, didn't need to be done, because in a month after the June 19th meeting, which was a very long meeting, if you guys remember, that were here, Commissioner Hyde asked the question, the previous county mayor, when's the greenway coming in? I said, well, we don't have any, what's the plans? Well, we don't have plans at this time. The key word was "at this time." When you look at the plans, whether the Long Hall of Pike Plan, whether you look at the 2035 Plan, look at the Master Parkson Greenway Plan, you look at the grant from the bridal house, everything deals with the greenway from Long Hall of Pike to Cotton Town. And, you know, I, I don't care what anybody says, saying, we're not voting for a greenway. There's no plans for a greenway. There are plans for a greenway. So the intent here is to, how do we best bind a future commission and keep them from doing something that, that its citizens don't want to do? Because we all know, we've been told, what one commission does, you can't stop another commission from undoing. Even this is not a magic bullet, it's just a step, it's a layer. This needs 16 votes to pass tonight. I pray and hope that we have 23 votes tonight for this, because it protects citizens, it protects private property rights, and I'm asking for your vote in support of this, and I so move, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Mansfield, second by Commissioner Pomeroy. Commissioners show.
I really appreciated all the folks coming up here tonight to speak, so I'm going to be super short. I, I'm going to support this. I can't imagine hearing from these folks and not supporting this. Further, I mean, what, as we just heard, and what I've heard many times, what one commission can do, another commission can undo, but guess what? If they want to do it in four years, or eight years, or, or whenever it gets turned over, they're going to have to get up, and they're going to have to vote this down, and they're going to have to get on record. They won't be able to hide, and be able to say, hey, I'm voting in four years, eight years, 16, whenever this happens, I'm voting to allow the government here to take private property in order to do what we think they should do with it. So, I like that, and I'm going to... So I like that, and I'm going to support it.
Thank you. Commissioner Ring.
Yes, sir, I have a question for the attorney. This includes municipal, hospitals, schools, other authorities. Do we have the ability, do we have the right as a county commission to include those different agencies in this legislation?
So with this being a private act, if the legislature did pass it, it is a law that would apply to Sumner County very specifically, but coming through the state legislature, yes. It wouldn't be just an act of the commission.
So we can, this gives us the authority to tell county, municipalities what they can and cannot do, within this regard? Is this correct?
I believe so, and the cities might challenge that, but.
Because I've had somebody from the city tell me that we can't do that.
I would not be surprised, that, that would be the opinions of some of the cities. And they could end up being the correct opinion, I, and they might fight us at some point, but I think we can.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to amend this, to remove everything except numbers two through 11.
What is your objection, Commissioner? I think, I think we should put, this is an amendment of sorts, and that's the way I'm going to see it, but he does not have a second, so.
Second.
Who made the second? Commissioner Harrison made the second. So we'll put this on the board, this amendment for, as a yes or no vote? Madam Clerk, unless someone wants to speak to the amendment.
Eliminate all of these except numbers two through 11. Which are the ones that deal with the county?
And I've not heard from anyone, so we'll put it on the board for an up or down vote.
Remove everything except numbers two through 11.
All right, we're calling for a vote now. Commissioner, is this on the amendment?
Yes. Okay. So I feel like that just because we're in a public meeting, it might be, it, it seems like the most proper thing to read which ones we're cutting out or which ones that we're not. I mean, just, I know it takes more time, but that way the folks listening at home that may not have a copy of this would, would have an opportunity, or the folks that are here would hear that. Could we have, you know, someone, or Mr. Ring, would, would you read the parts that would be cut out or the parts that would be kept or something?
Well, I would prefer not, but we can have him do it if you want. Go ahead, Commissioner Ring, if you'd like to do that.
Thank you.
As part of your amendment.
My amendment is to remove, number one, airport authorities, number 12, electric power districts, 13 hospitals, 14 housing authorities, 15 light, power, and heat companies, 16 municipal drainage ditches, 17 municipal electric plants, 18 municipal gas systems, 19 municipal industrial parks, 20 municipal mayor, 21 municipal city manager, 22 municipal parks, number 23 municipal transportation systems, number 24 municipal public works projects, number 25 municipal recreation systems, number 26 municipal schools, number 27 municipal sewers, number 28 municipal solid waste sites, number 29 municipal streets, 30 municipal utilities, 31 municipal water systems, 32 pipeline companies, and 33 solid waste authorities. And may I speak to my motion, sir?
Now, I am keeping up with who is in the queue, and I believe Commissioner Pomeroy came in later, so are you speaking on this amendment or, or on the main? On the amendment, okay, okay. Go ahead.
I believe this would be clarity for the amendment. First of all, I seconded the main motion when, when I read, eminent domain is something that I'm, I am against. However, I think as you read through this and go down a little bit farther, there are some things here that are, so I think what Mr. Ring's amendment is trying to do, and I want to make sure I understand that, for instance, a municipal water system or utility, I'm assuming somewhere down the line, if an annexation takes place or something like that, that the utility district's going to go in and say, we're, we're putting whatever they're putting in, or, or are we stepping on? I mean, that, that's just what I'm trying to understand. You know, you read the big bold letters that say, this is to stop greenways and the county from doing stuff in the county property, and I'm standing here going, absolutely, 100%. But do we have the right, just to clarify which way I'm going to vote, if we could tell an electric gas company one day that they can't run gas pipe and make an easement in someone's front yard? I don't, I don't know if we can do that. I know someone made a reference when they were speaking about who would build something in somebody in the Fairview Plantations backyard, I'd tell you who, the Corps of Engineers would do whatever they want to do. And they wouldn't listen to the property owner, us, or the, anybody. And I think that's kind of what we would get into if we, and if, if it's not, I just need some clarification on that, but when it gets out of the county scope, it starts saying, utility districts, gas companies, solid waste companies, how, how do we do that legally? How can we do that?
Well, I'm not a lawyer, but I think the intent of this was to preserve the rights of the private landowners, and that would include other areas other than just the county. And I think our attorney spoke to that. Yes, go ahead.
The resolution does specifically state only for parks, trails, paths, or greenways for walking, running, hiking, bicycling, or equestrian use. This would not stop, you know, a water company from putting in a water line or anything, in no way, whether in a city or in the county.
Okay, so it's just saying if a water department wants to put a greenway or a park in somebody's yard.
This is saying that the, like, Galton Utility Company.
I can go with, I just wanted, I just, I, I can't imagine a water company would want to do that, but I couldn't imagine the county wanted to do it either, so, you know, I, I agree, I appreciate you covering your bases.
Okay, Commissioner, let's see, we had some leave the queue. Commissioner Rogers, is this on the amendment? Okay.
Yes, sir, it is, Mr. Chairman. It's what I think it is, and my vision of this, and legal by all means, please correct me if I'm wrong.
But this actually makes a builder have his infrastructure in place, i.e. roads, what he's wanting to develop on the piece of land that he's, or she has bought. And then, once these roads and infrastructure's in place, then within that footage from the edge of the road or the center of the road, whichever way the deed is written, that's where these water lines and utilities and all these things in question have to go, which is the way it should be, correct?
That's the way I think.
Not necessarily as far as having to have the infrastructure in place, it's just saying that you cannot use eminent domain for the specific purpose of a greenway or trailer or some sort. They can still have an easement placed in all the properties before they sell them if they subdivide the lot. Any, the homeowners association could retain a certain amount of land to put a greenway on, or any kind of other utility things, like you're talking about, their utility lines and things like that, it'd have no effect on that. So it's not like if you ever want to have a walking path, then a developer has to make the path before the homes go in or before it's sold. They can, there's several ways where they can make it, but it wouldn't be through eminent domain from the county or from any of these listed organizations.
Correct, it would have to be on the land of which they purchased, and then the homeowners association would obviously be only on the land of which the builder purchased.
And if the county wanted to build a greenway for public use and they consented to put it through there, then we still could.
Right, but that's outside of the scope of the resolution, let's don't get too far off in the weeds.
Well, I'm just saying that as to, saying what we are stopping, what we're not stopping.
Sure, thank you.
Commissioner Jones.
I just wanted to be clear on the amendment. First of all, Commissioner, do you plan on revising your amendment, or is it still staying? I'm going to give you an opportunity before I speak. You, you are for, the amendment is to allow the cities to put the greenways through people's yards, not along roadways, is that correct?
Mr. Chairman, can I clarify?
You may.
It's not for anything. The idea is that I don't believe that we have the right to forbid or cities or other agencies to do things, or we have, or we don't have the right to, to ask, to tell them they have to. I believe, I'm all in favor of numbers two through 11 because they only deal with Sumner County. The rest of it deals with other agencies, and I don't believe we have the authority to tell them what they can and cannot do.
Thank you, I understand that. I'm going to go with our law director's advice that we can, and I will be voting to support that.
All right, I, I think that we have come to a place where the others are on the main motion.
Mr. Chairman, I do have one.
Commissioner show.
Yeah, I just want to be super clear here. I've read this amendment a couple times, and, but thank you for that clarification to, from the interim county attorney. What, just very simply, what this resolution does is I read it by preventing greenways, not the core functionality of a sewage plant or a hospital. It doesn't interfere with that at all. What it does is it prevents an organization, yes, it's, some of these that were listed to include hospitals, et cetera, from doing, from putting a greenway in under the auspices of a core function, which is exactly what we just heard from citizens today. We bring, we're going to bring in core functionality in a sewage, oh, wait, that's not what we're doing, we're going to put in a greenway. This is designed to prevent government, here, it's designed to tie our hands, from surreptitiously using core functionality in order to bring in something that is not core functionality. That's the way I read this, and so I'm going to support it without amendments.
All right, I think we are now on the amendment for a vote, up or down, Commissioner Ring's amendment. Madam Clerk, would you place it on the board?
Each commissioner records your vote.
Okay, now we're back on the main motion, that being defeated. Commissioner Janong.
Thank you. I'd like to say that I have been a victim of my land being taken by the city of Galton twice, or, well, once, and then they're trying to take it again on another piece of property. And I understand, I am totally for this because I had, was pretty much left without a voice. I was told I had to do it, they would take it if I didn't want to give it to them. And it caused a lot of problems, it caused a lot of problems for the properties that I own, and I feel that the government is not your friend, no government is your friend. And I think that we need to be very cautious about the people in this room, and including all of us sitting here, that it's important for us to understand that we don't have the right to take anybody's property. Now, I understand what Mr. Baker said, but I, I see the housing authority, the school, all those other things he had on here, saying that we don't have a right to tell them, we have a right to tell them anything we want to tell them. They may not disagree, they not agree with us, but I feel like we need to vote yes, I'm going to vote yes on it, because I have been a victim of it, and I want to let you know that it is not pretty, and you never win unless you have support of the people sitting in this room. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Teichner.
Mr. Chairman, I just had to say, I knocked on about a thousand doors, and I didn't meet one individual in one home who wanted property to be taken from them. I've ne, in fact, I've never met anyone in my entire life who supported government taking property, even if it's for a good reason, in the government's eyes. But I don't, I don't want to say that to vote for this just for what we have the right to do. I would like to take away our rights and give the citizens the right to say, no, we're, we're not interested. And I think that that, that's, we don't need to be overbearing to our people who we represent or the people in the entire county. And so I just, I really, it makes me excited that we had to vote 16 out of, out of the whole group. I'd like to see 24 or 23 across the board, just because we have the opportunity to actually be the solution or to be a friend to the citizens for once. And this is a great moment to work together, all of us, not against each other, not, not combating each other, and, and to answer one constituent's call for peace. And I think that it would bring so much peace from the turmoil of the people who were tearful to me about, about overstepping of the government. And so I really encourage each person, just to think through everybody you've ever spoken to, and, and tell me if you've had any majority who, who actually would be for you as a government official taking away their property or anyone else in this county taking away their property. So just remember, it's for a greenway. So if you buy the property, it's your property, you get to ride, walk on it all you want, or you can put up a no trespassing sign. And so this is given the right for a no trespassing sign to the, to the government of the Sumner County.
Commissioner Holmes.
I would just like to say, this is the, I have, I have a lot of things I could say, but I, you've heard it all. Personally, our, our property was, was affected by this. I could, I could go on and on and on for a very long time, but I'm not going to. What I would really like to say is this is exactly why I ran and why I was elected, and it is my honor and a privilege for me to be able to vote yes for this finally for all of my neighbors, and all of your neighbors too, because I, I never dreamed something like this could happen to me, and I'm sure Commissioner Janong didn't either, but it did. And this obviously is not bulletproof, but it is very, it's a step in the right direction that at least makes it a little bit harder for somebody to tell you that they have a better plan for your private property than you do, and that's wrong. And just because it's legal and you can, doesn't mean that you should. So I am happy and privileged to be able to vote yes for all of you guys.
Thank you. Commissioner Wright.
It's your property, you paid for it, you paid taxes on that property. It should be yours to do what you want with. You don't want somebody coming in on your property and taking your TV, come in and take your microwave. It's your property, people, it's not that difficult.
Commissioner Ring.
Yes, sir. I brought up my amendment because I believe it's oversteps. I believe it, it's, we will be subject to lawsuits at some point because of this, that's a possibility. I will, I will vote for this, but I wanted to make you aware that there are some issues with this that could possibly come back to bite us in the future. Thank you.
All right, before anyone jumps in, let's put this on the board. Madam Clerk. Oh, Commissioner Pomeroy.
Ask him.
That's a very, very bad joke. All right.
Yep.
Where was I? Okay, I think we do need to do this over again. You, you might announce the vote before we.
I did, I just said he jumped in.
Oh, okay. All right, that receives a unanimous vote. Uh, Commissioner Mansfield.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, next item is twenty-two, twelve dash zero four, it's the meeting dates for Sumner County Commission twenty twenty-three, that's in your packet, I so move.
Our motion's been made, and a second, Commissioner Becker.
There it is. Uh, I think, just to, a point of, I guess, a question, on the November month, it, that happens to be the week of Thanksgiving, so, I believe, so if, if that's what the intent was, I just want to make sure, because I think this year we ended up moving it a week prior, so, um, just for that, I, I would, I would maybe like to see that maybe moved up to the thirteenth, but, um, whether we do that now or wait, Dunrim, I just wanted to point out that is the week of Thanksgiving, so...
I would, I would make a suggestion, because we changed December just like a month or so ago, that we maybe go ahead with this, we, I think one big piece is we don't have a school schedule yet, uh, that I know of, but I would suggest that we go ahead and look at, uh, when we get close to that, if we want to change that date. Unless you want to proceed with some kind of motion, change it.
I'll go ahead and, I guess, make an a-
Give us a date.
Amendment for Monday, November the thirteenth, instead of the twentieth, because it, it falls on the week of Thanksgiving, and it, yeah.
All right, second by Commissioner Lambert. Everyone understands now what it's being changed to, it's, it's be the second Monday instead of the third Monday in, uh, November. All right, Commissioner Rogers.
Mr. Chairman, just real quick, uh, if I may, thank you for giving me the time to speak, but this, this is, this causes a lot of confusion, uh, and it's hard to cram committees in within this amount of time, shortening it all up. I know that was an issue, um, some people wanted to go trick or treating, which I don't mind, um, but that was an issue this year, trying to back all that up and, and get all the committees in, so it's just something to consider.
All right, Commissioner Wynn.
So that was my question, was how does that leave, uh, our committees? Do we have enough time? The committees are still functioning with having that on the second week, so it sounds like, of November.
I think the attorney has something he'd like to say.
Just from the office, that kind of gets all the agendas together, it is a little more difficult on those months where we do move it up, just because everything is on port, uh, shorter timeframe to get everything together, you know, pros and cons on just whether or not you want to meet the same week as the holidays, because people might be out of town, but it does make it more difficult to get everything together in a shorter timeframe.
All right, a yes vote, uh, Commissioner Becker.
Just clarifying, the, the schools are out that entire week, just to clarify, so, or verify, whatever.
Commissioner Janong.
Yes, sir. Um, when I looked at the calendar for that month, we don't have a, November first is on a Wednesday, so we don't have a Monday for EMS that week, and then we, the next week would be, you know, a committee on committee like we have now, and then the commission would be on the thirteenth, so we would have to have our, our committee meetings on November the first. So I'm just saying that that would be messed up.
Commissioner Ring.
Well, just a thought, maybe we can do it on the fourth Monday, like we do for the, uh, federal holidays in, in, uh, January and February, just a thought. Or the committee meetings that normally would be on the first of the month could be put into the end of, end of, uh, October, if we were to do this.
All right, uh, let's, uh, let's vote then on this amendment, it'll be moving November's meeting to the se, Commissioner Becker.
I, I'd like to change my motion and, and to no, Monday, November the twenty-seventh.
All right, so, okay. The new amendment is from the second to the fourth.
Correct.
Uh, Commissioner Lambert is signifying his agreement to that as a second, and we will, uh, put that in the queue. A yes vote is to change it to the fourth, a no vote, it will stay as it is on the third.
Wait a minute.
The amendment is to make it the fourth.
Yeah.
Is to make it the fourth Monday, so a yes vote is for it to be the fourth, a no vote is for it to stay the third.
There we go.
You ready? All right. So the yes has that, that's six, sixteen votes, okay, Commissioner Mansfield.
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman, uh, twenty-two, twelve dash zero five is appointing Eric Sittler as county attorney and law director for Sumner County, Tennessee.
Uh, according to the order, Mr. Chairman, I've been voting for the, for the date, we just voted for the amendment.
Uh, you're right.
Okay.
All right, the main motion then is on the floor. It's an affirmative vote with twenty-one. All right, Commissioner Mansfield.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Twenty-two, twelve dash zero five, appointing Eric Sittler as county attorney, law director for Sumner County, Tennessee, and I so move.
Motion's been made, and, uh, who, uh, Commissioner Rogers made a second. Uh, Commissioner Becker.
Yeah, I would, I would like for us to consider, um, having, having this, having Mr. Sittler fulfill the, the term that is, that is vacated currently, instead of, basically, instead of the four-year term starting tonight or whatever, that he fulfills Ms. Denham's, uh, you know, the previous term, and then, you know, and we, it gets us back to the cycle where it's not during election years, which is the original purpose that Mr. Allen explained to me, is the whole, when it was first set up, and Mr. Allen, I, maybe I could, Mr. Chairman, if I can ask Mr., if, if, I can ask a question, that when it was originally set up...
Let's let the attorney speak to that issue, because I think the law may have something to do with that.
Commissioner Becker is right, as far as the private act was set up with an initial six-year term, followed by four-year terms, and the idea was to get it in the middle of the commission's term. That way, they get in, you know, get their bearings, and then decide whether or not they want to keep their attorney versus right when they, they walk in. So that was the idea for, why the initial term was six years. As far as, after that, every term does have to be four years, I don't think it's necessarily clear as far as, can this be for filling the term that we are currently in, or does it just start a new four-year term today? I think both are reasonable ways to read it, and whichever way the commission goes, I think you have solid ground to stand on.
Commissioner Wynn.
A couple questions here, I, I asked the same question that, uh, Commissioner Becker did in committee, uh, and was essentially given the same answer, but, uh, one thing that just occurred to me is, can we accomplish that by calling him an interim attorney, county attorney, for the first two years, and then look at doing a four-year afterwards?
I don't think, uh, that interim attorney was a directive given to the committee, I think we'd have to start over from scratch, uh, and I'm not even sure then that certain people would want to even apply for the job if it was an interim position for a short period of time, but that's just my reasoning on it.
Yeah, and, and, you know, I, I think Mr. Sittler, uh, you know, that's our candidate that's been, been presented, uh, just looking at a way to where we can maintain that off-cycle election track and still be within the, the legal bounds of our private act, uh, so just something to, to consider and throw out there, uh, if that's, you know, something that, that this body wanted to do, uh, but I, I did have some other questions, uh, besides that. So I, I talked to our interim attorney, our county attorney, uh, Ben, and, and I'd asked him, you know, because there's language in, in the employment agreement that, uh, that I wasn't sure about, and it was, uh, number eight, the reporting, and it states that the report, uh, employee reports to the county commission undertakes all duties and responsibilities set forth in the private action resolution of this body. Uh, I really scratched my head on that, and I know, Ben, you gave me information on it, so this is, this is modeled after the previous, uh, county attorney's contract and their agreement, and, uh, thank you for getting that to me, but I still scratched my head on it, is, is how a full-time employee reports to a part-time body. Uh, and so I reached out to C T A S today and, and spoke with, or actually earlier in the week, and C T A S came back with me today, asked them the same question, uh, and, and they indicated that, uh, you know, our private act really is, is void in this area, uh, a, as far as who this person reports to. Uh, and i, it's, it's very explicit in how this person's hired, but as far as they're reporting to, uh, it's void. So there really isn't language in there that, that, that says that this person reports to the county commission, or is responsible to the county commission. All that it does say is that, that this person is to represent all of the, uh, elected officials essentially in the county, all of their, uh, their needs as far as legalities go, and, and it's not the best way to say that, but, uh, that's essentially, essentially what it was saying. So, but the way C T A S explained it is the county attorney is, is really almost like an autonomous position, you know, in some counties it's elected, ours is more appointed, uh, but there really isn't, when they look at the, the, the letter of the law, a structure defined as to who this person reports to. Uh, so I, I don't know if that's, if that's appropriate, uh, that, that this person would report to the county commission, and if so, is it the chairman of the county commission? Do they have twenty-four bosses? Uh, you know, so I would like to maybe see a little bit more clarification there, if not just strike it totally, uh, just because I, I don't think that the private act in and of itself is clear in that area.
I, uh, as a matter, matter of explanation along these lines, I, I can understand your, uh, where you're coming from on that, but, uh, a number of years ago, when I was on the commission, and also, uh, Commissioner Vaughn, uh, Commissioner Vaughn was chairman of the, um, Health and Emergency Services, and he was directly reported to by the emergency medical service. If they had a problem, they called him. It was voted to change that at the county, uh, mayor's recommendation, and, and if you go back, I'm not sure what year that, that was, but if you go back, you can see in the record where it actually was changed at a specific time, that, uh, the chairman of, of that committee would not be directly responsible, but the day-to-day responsibility would go to the mayor. So it, it's something that has happened in the past, and I think the county attorney is asking to speak to that also.
I, I just want to kind of explain really how the office works. Because of our role, you don't really want us to be answering to one person, just because that one person's interest could not align with the county's interests as a whole. And I'm not saying that the county's attorney's office or the law director needs complete autonomy, we are not, you know, this person, uh, Mr. Sittler, will not be an elected official, he's not like the sheriff, who's only answering to the voters. So there needs to be some sort of oversight, and that's where the commission comes in. This role necessarily requires a lot of autonomy, because you don't have a direct report, other than a body of twenty-four commissioners who, unless they have a special call meeting, can give you a directive really once a month. So in that is, by design in a lot of ways, it's, while the private act doesn't necessarily spell out that the attorney is going to always answer directly to the commission, I believe it's always just been interpreted since the commission elects them, that, that's who the attorney would have report to. And part of that idea is, no one person would have undue influence on any kind of legal matters in the county, it's because it has, would have to report to a body of twenty-four.
And I asked a similar question too, just to C T A S, because, you know, I was just trying to get my hands around it and, and fully understand, um, and, you know, essentially C T A S was saying that the, the county commission doesn't have any employees, and they're really not allowed to have any employees, and so why would we have this employee? Uh, so it's just a concern of mine that I have with, with this wording, uh, I don't know if we need to, if it needs to be amended, uh, to include all elected officials, and then it's kind of even, uh, a, as far as who they actually report to, uh, but I also have other questions too, in regards to, just along that, kind of that same vein, so I can pause for a minute if you...
I think, um, to help answer your question, the attorney just made a, um, a statement that, and, and I lived through the hiring of the, a first person, uh, in financial, in, um, the finance office, but that person is directly responsible to the county commission. Uh, so it, it's not anything really new, and I don't think, for clarification purposes, I, I really don't think that it's being said that, hey, you can, uh, walk into the law office and say thus and so to the attorney, and they have to do it, you know, go empty the trash or whatever, it doesn't work that way. I think what it's saying is that, uh, they are somewhat autonomous, and with us being commissioners and not having any authority outside of our meeting here once a month, that that is the safest way of doing this and keeping this position clean of politics.
Okay, I, I guess I'll make a motion then, if I can, we can amend that number eight just along what you were saying, and it really is, just take the word reports out and change that to, uh, what did you say, like, responsible to, or, uh, I, just the word reports really indicates that you work for me, uh, and so I, I think that would help clear maybe confusion in the future, uh, as to if there was anyone that maybe, uh, misread that and think that this is their employee.
Okay, I, I don't read it that way, but you make a motion, however it's clear to you, and we'll go, go through that process.
Okay. Yeah, I'd like to replace the word reports, um, just is responsible to the county commission. So replace the word, the employee, or replace the word reports with is responsible to.
Okay, uh, we have, uh, we have a motion here, is there a second? That dies for a second.
Okay.
Go ahead with your next question.
Yeah, next question is, is, as I was reviewing this, uh, I, I didn't really see, uh, well, say, I, there were some provisions in there for removal for disability, and then disciplinary action, uh, also by the Tennessee Board of Professional Responsibility, but what I didn't see was any protections related to, to the county and the taxpayers of the county, if the person is just, is proven to just to be incompetent, and really can't perform the duties of the job. And so i, if, if we were to hire, uh, an attorney who, who, you know, just comes in and, and really shows that, you know, this isn't their cup of tea, we're stuck for the life of the contract, four years, or until they decide to leave. Uh, so I, I would really like to see maybe some early-term language put in there, I think it's pretty standard in most contracts, uh, employment agreements, and it's void in here. I think it does add a layer of protection for the taxpayer, uh, that we're not on the hook for, for a full four-year salary if, if someone decides that, or it's just not a good fit for us.
Could you help me by telling me what, how would we judge incompetence, and who would judge it?
Uh, that, that's a good question, uh, you know, whether it's...
Private act, this is bound by private act, it's four years, we don't get to dictate in terms of hiring and firing, it's, it's, you want to do that, you change that law, so...
The commissioner wants to put forward another private act, change it, go through the process, more the welcome, but it, it is a private act. It is, the law explicitly states it's for, for your contract, um, you don't get to negotiate it.
Go ahead.
Okay, um, and then I, I'll, I'll end on this. So I, I did have a good conversation with Mr. Sittler, uh, and we talked about a lot of different areas of his practice, and spent a lot of time discussing his experience and, uh, with, you know, HOAs and HOA management companies. Uh, so, but I, I asked Mr. Sittler for additional information just to validate, uh, his experience that was expressed in, as, as a contributing factor for why he was selected. Uh, and that being the, uh, his experience in, uh, it was, uh, I think it was real estate and then specialty in environmental affairs. And, uh, I, I did not receive that, any information that would help me validate that, uh, as far as just like his casework, what all he's litigated, uh, just here in the past, you know, recent time, uh, that would just help me be able to, to feel comfortable uh, with what's put out there. I know it's put in a profile, uh, it's provided to the ad hoc committee, uh, but I really do think that when you look at someone's actual casework, that really kind of shows and speaks more to their experience as opposed to just the words that they put on, on a piece of paper. So, uh, had a great conversation with Mr. Sittler, but at this point, uh, I don't feel that I have enough information to really make a decision, uh, so I'm just going to stand from this vote.
All right, um, Commissioner Harrison.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I was privileged to serve on the ad hoc committee for the, uh, interviews for the law director. And of course, we interviewed four candidates. Uh, two were forwarded to legislative, and then one pulled out at the, uh, at the 11th hour. I don't specifically have a concern about Mr. Sittler as an individual or his capabilities as an attorney or his ability maybe even to represent us. I do have a little bit of a concern with bringing in someone that is going to have to, uh, deal with the scope of what Ben and, and prior to, uh, to Ben filling this position, uh, Ms. Denon. I think we may have set the salary a little high. That's my opinion. So I'm going to move to amend this motion to adjust the salary down to the lower level that I think we had initially advertised on the job posting sites to 165,000.
All right, there is a motion to lower the salary to 165, and, um, it has been seconded by, uh, Commissioner Ring. Is there anyone in the queue now that is speaking to the amendment? Commissioner Pomeroy.
165, that was originally in there, was that the previous law director's salary?
It was more.
The previous law director's salary was more? Was it, I just didn't do my homework on this, I'm, I'm in it. Um, was it, was it more than 184, or is what we're proposing less than 184?
Yeah, my range of 185.
25, okay, I just want to make sure that we're not just giving a random, if it was a raise, obviously the elephant in the room, we had a, I think, a competent, very good female attorney. That, to me, that's not a very good look to say, oh, we're doing this if the money was going up. So that's what I wanted to confirm there, so...
Okay, was there anyone else in the queue that, uh, was wanting to speak to just the amendment? All right, we're going to vote on the amendment, and the clerk will put it on the board. Commissioner Schmidt.
Quick question, let's, things not work.
She cha- she has to give it, turn it off.
What took you to red?
There you go.
Was, yeah, was the salary, when Mr. Sittler sat down with this committee, was the salary negotiated for the 185 at the committee? Or was it, was there an understanding that it could be lower to Mr. Sittler?
I think Mr. Mansfield...
I'm just asking that, because if he was brought under the impression that, and he agreed with the committee that it would be 185, you know, and now we're making amendment for 165, that's...
I think Mr. Mansfield can answer that.
Thank you.
And legislative, we voted on 185 as well, and that's what the agreement that was presented to him. Um, and the previous law director's salary is around 1, 193, um, and so, um, this, the range was 18, 165 to 185, and we offered him the 185 based on his experience. So we, um, but just, just to clarify, um, it was discussed in legislative, and that was, well, it was offered to him. Um, so this is definitely a, a change in scope.
All right, um, we have that on the board now. I think that clears the queue of the amendment, uh, so Madam Clerk.
Each commissioner, record your vote.
All right, uh, that amendment was voted down, and we're back on the main, uh, motion of, uh, hiring, uh, Commissioner Sittler under this contract, and I will recognize Commissioner Becker.
Okay, my question right now is, it centers around the hundred, that, I guess, the unused vacation time. I guess it's section five. Says invented the employee because of job duties cannot take vacation days. Employee may ask to be compensated for up to 100 hours of unused vacation time. My, my question, a, a scenario would, might be, you know, requesting the 100 hours, and then the next day, or soon as, soon as it's given, the pay is given, he quits or whatever. Is, is the, how is the unused vacation time dealt with, um, throughout the county? And is, is, is my question, is there a real concern there? Is that scenario even possible to happen? Does that make sense what my question is, Chairman?
Well, I, I think, Commissioner, that, um, anything certainly could happen. However, if you look at, uh, the previous, uh, county attorney of being given a, a year's salary and not even being present here to work, the, you know, it's a wide range of, of possibilities, but it's up to this commission to do the right thing.
Well, I know there's a lot of opposition to her receiving the, the remaining three months of her salary by, by commissioners, you know, current commissioners here, so this, this is essentially doing the same thing. Is that a fair assessment?
Commissioner Becker, that section has been in the contract with the previous county attorney for I don't know how many iterations, uh, I know at least the last two. Uh, this is simply, it's a very time-consuming job. I'm sure most of you can think of a time you've called me after seven o'clock at night. So it's, taking your vacation is not always something that's really possible to do, and as a consideration of that, it's just, instead of having it roll over into your sick time, uh, to just get a payout. Because one thing that Commissioner Mansfield said was largely correct is it was budgeted for her salary for the 193. That was with the 100 hours of sick leave, uh, not sick leave, unused vacation pay, which she would normally take because she didn't use those vacation hours. Now, this contract does add something that was never included before, that upon termination, if it's midterm, that any unused vacation hours do not get paid out. So when your average employee in the county, uh, leaves for one reason or the other, unless, you know, they committed a felony or fired for it, they're getting paid out however much vacation they have. Now, if Mr. Sittler assigns his contract, if he leaves before the end of his term, he loses out on any vacation hours he has left. Now, if he waits to time his, uh, notice to you all that he's leaving until after he gets paid out his 100 hours, well, that's something that he could theoretically do. Now, as far as any other agreements, as far as what happened with Ms. Denon's departure, that was agreement that was decided after by the previous commission, and nothing's stopping you from making whatever agreements you want after for any kind of continuance of service, but that's not a part of this contract, and that wasn't a part of her contract either. So that would be something that you either decide, if he were to leave either at the end of his term or for whatever reason, you could decide at that point if you wanted any kind of continuing provision, whether it's as a contracted service or whatever, but that would be something you would decide at that time, under a new contract and new agreement.
And then one, one more quick question, Mr. Chairman, is I've heard a couple of different figures, dollar figures, talked about. The, the previous law director's salary was slightly less than the 185. That's my understanding. Yeah, not, yeah, slightly, so I just want to make sure that I've heard 193, and you just explain about that, some vacation days. Another commissioner had asked about, is this a big bump? So it is a very, very slight bump.
It's almost identical.
Because, because, because previous commission has, had tied, there's no resolution, I don't guess, but had tied the law director's salary to the, uh, judicial salaries, the general session judges, I believe. Is, is that...
There was, uh, Commissioner, there was nothing ever stated, to my knowledge officially, but when we, uh, hired previously, it was with the understanding they would be similar to a general sessions judge's salary.
Correct, and so we've been doing that...
That was the talk among the commission.
Yes, sir, so we've been doing that the past eight years at least, from my understanding. So again, it's right there, I, I'm not opposed to, to severing those, you know, that, that, one way or the other, but I didn't want, I just wanted to touch on it because there have been some questions around it, so that's all I got for right now.
Thank you, that helps clarify some things. Commissioner Shou.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I, I actually, one thing I d- I don't like about this contract, and I've learned, uh, something over the last couple of weeks, um, I don't like that there isn't a period of performance in it. And, uh, you know, typically you'd have a contract that would have like one year with a subsequent three years. But, uh, unfortunately, uh, as Commissioner Mansfield pointed out, and our interim county attorney pointed out, uh, we can't do anything to change that because of, uh, the auspices of the, uh, private act. But what I would like to do, I think, might help some of the consternation that we have here. Uh, point out that number seven, there is disciplinary action, so there is, there are things which can cause termination. Um, it's a pretty high bar, and it should be under that private act. But what I would maybe, uh, move to amend is, is add, uh, number 10 here, and I'm going to, I'm going to read this, but I just wrote it down. It's, it's probably a bit rough. Should the law director, uh, choose to end this agreement or be terminated pursuant to item, pursuant to paragraph seven of this agreement, the law director forfeits any further compensation otherwise allowed under the full term of this agreement to include any unused time, uh, paid time off or leave.
All right, motion's been made and seconded by, uh, Commissioner Becker. Uh, we're speaking now about the, uh, amendment. Commissioner Mansfield.
Just to clarify, this is, intent of this amendment is, if I'm understanding Commissioner Shou correctly, so that basically we're not giving somebody a golden parachute out the door. Is that the intent?
Yes, it is.
Okay, well, I'm all in favor of that.
All right, um, there's no one else in here on the amendment, uh, so we'll vote on that amendment. Madam Clerk.
Each commissioner, record your vote.
And that vote is unanimous, uh, 23 votes. Uh, Commissioner Ring.
Yes, sir, just a question, um, I watched the, um, interviews, and a subject came up that Mr. Sittler had just recently been elected to the Hendersonville City as an alderman, and, um, that there was discussion about him resigning from that seat. I just want to make sure that, that is, uh, that he will be resigning from that seat if he's, if he is, uh, appointed, thank you.
He will.
Just wanted to clarify, thank you.
Uh, Commissioner Harrison.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, looking at number seven, and this is just a question, maybe it may be, need to be directed to the attorney. If this, uh, disciplinary action was to take place, is that the bar by law? By our private act, or could it be reduced to a simple majority?
If you want to speak to that, I'm a legal...
Are you asking that, should the Board of Professional Responsibility publicly censure the attorney, whether or not we could lower that to a majority? I believe we could, but without looking specifically for that information, I can't say with certainty.
Thank you.
All right, seeing no one else in the queue, I'll ask that the clerk place the main motion on the, uh, board.
Each commissioner, record your vote.
Uh, receives overwhelming 18 votes, and, uh, it's more than the two-thirds, uh, threshold. And at this time, I would like to, uh, just say to the committee, would the committee please stand, they went through this process? I observed, uh, some of their work and their meetings, and they did a tremendous job, uh, uh, took a great deal of time out of their schedule to do this, and I think as a result, uh, we have hired, uh, an outstanding, uh, county attorney. So I thank each one of you for your service. And, uh, I would ask at this time if, uh, uh, and, uh, please be very brief, but Mr. Sittler, if you would like to come forward and just, uh, say something to the commission, since you are a new employee?
I do appreciate everybody's consideration, this is...
Uh, if you will step up here, uh, yeah, we, we, we like to look at you.
I, I appreciate everybody's consideration in this matter, and the more time I've spent, uh, going through the, uh, vetting, vetting process, the more I've realized how much I'm, I'm anxious to, uh, take part in working with the county. I've, I was raised here, uh, left thinking, uh, there was a bigger world out there, got out there and thought, you know what? This wasn't such a bad place after all. So I came back and, uh, married my wife, and we've been here for 20 years together, raised our kids here. So, uh, I feel good that I, I can actually do the profession I love, get some self-fulfillment out of working with the county that I, I love as well. So thank you very much for your consideration. Any questions?
Does that conclude your report, Mr. Chairman? All right.
Thank you. Uh, 2212-12 is, uh, a request for our rules to be amended, uh, which read, amending the standing rules and procedures to include the prohibition of cell phone usage during meetings of the full county commission. Uh, I so move for discussion and action.
All right, motion and second's been made, uh, any discussion? Commissioner, Commissioner Pomeroy?
I'd like to speak to this, but not yet. I was actually in there before. It's been customary at the two hour and 45-minute mark, we've taken a restroom break, so just whenever we could fit that in, I would, I would suggest it.
That's approaching, so we will, uh, let, let's, uh, if we can talk three people out of the queue, we can, uh, do that. Commissioner Ring?
Good, I'm good with it.
All right, Commissioner Harris?
My question is, does this include the committee meetings also?
I would think it would include everything.
Does it include the committee meetings?
Does this include the committee meetings in our?
We can discuss that when it would time to discuss it.
It, it's my understanding it does not. It just says in, the meetings of the full county commission, so, I mean, obviously, this can be amended or stated however it wants to be stated.
For an amendment, Mr. Chairman, that this includes the committee meetings also.
All right, a motion has been made to amend that. Back, Commissioner Harris, is there a second?
Second.
All right, second's been made. Any discussion? I don't see anyone new. Commissioner Pomeroy.
Yeah, I guess we can speak on this. I was actually, I'm glad that somebody did this, but I think as most stuff we do, from what I can see, it's not been done fully, because we don't really know what the intention is. Obviously, as I've just looked around tonight, knowing this was going on, I looked around a lot, I mean, cell phones have been out and done for a while, and I wanted to put something like this up just because we have certain commissioners and, you know, that will go and report what people say are doing on their cell phones on all different avenues without reporting others, just assuming what someone may or may not be doing. However, when we, when we think about this, then we need to figure out what means of communication we're going to have. I'm assuming the intent is to keep people from communicating, and somehow, is that going to be that all 24 county commissioners get their county-issued iPads? That they're only allowed to work on that? Are individual tablets going to be allowed? Are we going to restrict people from their watches? Are we going to, I mean, again, a lot of stuff we do, and we're about to have to, we've got three judges out here that we forgot to give them their master rates because we're too busy doing stuff like this. Well, I'm, no, it's a big deal. And, and we, and there's just no, there's no, there's no what the rules, what the definition, what the intent, how we're going to do it, what devices it goes to, and, and we forget major stuff. Let's just put a, let's do something complete.
All right.
Is there any answers to that? You just answered differently than the other commissioner on, if it was in committee meetings or not.
Well, I think everybody has their own opinion of what, I don't mind. You're, you're talking to someone who used a party line telephone and didn't, didn't communicate my telephone watches or anything else, and I survived.
I understand, Mr. Chairman, I'm all for. Mr. Chairman, I understand, I'm all for if we're gonna, but we need to list what we're saying.
Okay, Commissioner Wright.
I have a question for the chief deputy, if I may. Are we not?
Oh, I'll allow the chief deputy to speak.
I'm sorry.
I'll allow him to answer.
Am I not on duty 24 hours a day, seven days a week? Do I need to have my cellphone available to work if I am needed 24 hours a day, seven days a week? Thank you. I am asking this body, whatever the decision is made, that, and I'm not saying I'm any better than anyone else or anything else. My main job is to protect the citizens of this county, and I am available 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and I have been called out before many times after hours. Lord forbid the day ever comes that I have to leave one of these meetings, but I want to make sure that everyone understands that day may come. Thank you.
Commissioner Wright, that's well spoken, but that was clarified to me. I asked pretty much the same question about emergency calls from home or whatever, and I think the intention of this, as a way we would interpret it if it was adopted, the intention is just to stay off your telephone if you're playing games or watching sporting events, or, you know, and I hate to even bring this up, but you're, you've made me do it, because our attention should be focused on this meeting. If we get an incoming call, an emergency call or something, like Commissioner Pomeroy mentioned, we, we will, you can take a call certainly that way, but it's just a good-faith effort to the public that our 100% attention is to the business of the commission. Okay, Commissioner Nguyen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Appreciate Mr. Wright's comments, and, you know, I wholeheartedly agree. I think, one, we're all adults, and, you know, we, we should be able to self-regulate on that, and I think the seriousness of the job we've been elected to do should really dictate our behavior here in the chambers here, especially while we're in session and conducting, you know, business for behalf of our constituents. My real question i- is along the intent. What's the intent of this? And I think you've articulated that, and I don't know if that's spelled out explicitly in, in here, because I just don't want us to get to a point where, you know, if you touch your cellphone, suddenly you're, you're going to get called out, or, you know, your hand slapped to some degree, but, you know, if, if it, if the intent is to limit communication, then I don't think that we've gone far enough. And I think we need to really restrict all electronic devices and limit the access to those, and that would be, that would be my motion, would be to restrict all electronic devices.
Well, of course, you can make whatever motion you want to, but if this was instituted, it would be very diplomatic. I would not be calling or signaling anyone out from the podium up here to put your telephone out. You're not a student, you're not in class, and I'm not the teacher. So that will not happen. If anything happened at all that was brought to my attention, I might just privately talk with you to see if there was a problem, an issue that we needed to talk about, but...
Was, was this policy, because I didn't, I don't remember seeing it in our packet, at least what was sent over, and I may have missed it, was that, was the policy in our information that we were sent?
It came through legislative, was it?
It's a resolution, it was written. It's in the packet.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to queue for one.
The question has been called, and...
All right, Commissioner Ring. Thank you, sir. I'm the one who brought, asked to have this taken off the consent agenda. I attended the meeting, the legislative committee meeting where this was discussed. There was no reason why this was brought up. If there are people playing games, if there are people watching soccer or football or whatever else, they, I think, then they need to be called down quietly. We're adults, okay? I don't see why I cannot use my cellphone to do research during a meeting, or to have constituents or other citizens send me information, because they're watching this on television, and they might send me information that says, this is, can you get this clarified, or can you ask a question about this, or something like that? That happens quite often at meetings. During a zoning meeting, I will pull up my phone in order to look at a map of the area, because the maps we get for zoning aren't like fourth generation, the black and white maps, they're not always real clear, so I use my phone to do that. As a teacher, if I'm giving a standardized test, when I, if I was giving a standardized test, all the students are told to take your cell phones and put them away, take off your smartwatches and put those away, don't have any devices at all. So, if we're going to do this, are we going to have all, everybody who has a smartwatch, take that off, because you can make phone calls and text on your smartwatch? So is that the next thing we're going to do, just take away smartwatches? Put away, put, we have a container, everybody's going to come in and put all their cellphones in a container? I have a 94-year-old mother. I'm not going to have my cellphone turned off during a meeting. Okay? That's, that's that simple. I don't care what you say or do, my cellphone will be on during a meeting, because I have a 94-year-old mother, and if something happens to her, I want to know about it. I'm an adult, and if you've got a problem with somebody who's playing games, then talk to them about it, but do not put the rest of us on notice that we cannot be treated as adults. Thank you.
I think I just said the same thing. What, what we intend to do, Commissioner Ring, is if there is a problem, talk to a person about it. And I think the intent of this resolution is to say, we do not believe a person should be frivolously using electronic devices in the chamber.
The resolution prohibits it completely. The resolution.
All right, Commissioner Harrison.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. One of the biggest problems that we have in society today is we've got too much litigation and too many rules. We can't even keep up with the rules. Officer Wright knows that. Is there a way we can just, Mr. Chairman put it very succinctly, that the intent is to keep our focus here? We could rewrite this, we could amend it to say restrict, or we could just have maybe an official admonishment from the chair.
Are you making a motion to send this back?
No, I'm just talking to the, I'm just talking to it. Yeah, I'm just making some suggestions to keep us from having to pass a binding resolution. I was in the budget committee meeting when I got a call, a text message from my wife telling me they were on the way with my mother-in-law to the hospital. If I don't have my cellphone, I don't get that call or text. So, and, and Chairman Shoef of the budget committee can stipulate that, because I leaned over and told him, and I had to leave the budget committee meeting. So, these things do happen, so it's just a thought.
I, I think you just made a resolution, a, a motion to send this back for review and clarification to the legislative committee. Is there a second?
Second.
Second?
We already have one motion, the first.
And we'll vote on that. Is there anyone that wants to speak to this, this amendment, or this motion?
The motion, Mr. Chairman.
The motion is to send this back for clarification to committee, is to further explain what we really want to accomplish.
Mr. Chairman, I actually agree with what Commissioner Harrison just said. I, I think that, I like, maybe the intent, but if we know the intent behind it is to not be distracted from the county's business, maybe there's a way that we could send it back to, to committee, because whenever I voted on it in committee, that's what my intent was, but it's not very clear in, in the resolution. And so, I, I mean, I, I feel like that it would be silly for me to say that I would want to lay my phone aside, because I, I serve the people of the county, but I serve my wife and children, you know, they're, they're out driving, and so I've got that thought too, and I'm not, I'm not, like, like Commissioner Wright, I'm not bound by a contract, but that's my, I'm, I'm bound by, you know, to be with my family. So, it's a little different, I don't, I don't know where we would draw the line, and I feel like this is just a little too blurry, because if we pass it, we just, or if we vote on it, yes or no, we're just voting simply on the fact of it is exactly what it is in black and white, and sometimes life isn't black and white. So, maybe we, maybe we send it back, maybe we just have a, you know, a, a formal somewhat agreement, as, as a commission, I don't know, just my thoughts, but thank you.
Now, I'm assuming that everyone else in here is speaking to the main motion, and you're right, Commissioner, it's an amendment and not the main motion. Okay, go ahead.
So, I, I feel like we don't need to send this back to committee, because we, we're doing a lot of talking, but we can fix this really simply by just amending this and saying nothing about this resolution precludes the use of electronic devices for emergency purposes by any commissioner.
Information.
No, emergency uses.
I second.
All right, we can do, we can make this simpler, we can make it complicated. If the motion maker, and I made it for him, I think, would withdraw his, and the second, we could vote on this. What do you think, Commissioner Harrison?
I agree with drawing.
All right, who seconded his motion?
I second, I don't, I don't agree with drawing. Then I will, I'll keep it on.
All right, then we're going to vote on this amendment first. Anyone else speaking to this amendment? All right, let's vote on it, Madam Clerk. The first, it's Commissioner Harrison's, his was first. You won't put that on the board. We're voting on Commissioner Harrison's amendment to send this back to committee for review and clarification. That, that's, that's where we're voting on Commissioner Harrison. Nguyen never did follow through with his. There too, but we're voting on the, of the one Commissioner Harrison made to send it back to committee. And Commissioner Shoef's motion was to amend it here on the floor. The first one was what?
All of it.
Yeah. All right. All right, you got that now.
If I can make this all go away, I apologize if you check the school of types. I mean, I take the school, you have your set, I'll be, I'll apologize.
So what is this one? Everybody?
The first amendment that I have was from Mr. Harrison, to include the committee and the commission.
Right, and he also included in that same thing, when I suggested that he go back for rewritten, rewritten.
Mr. Harrison, would you remove your amendment? Is that what's holding up? Why don't you move my motion, Mr. James?
All right. I think about 10, about 10 minutes ago, I tried to make it simple by asking that it be removed, and, all right, the amendment now, on the floor, Mr. Shoef, would you repeat your amendment?
Mr. Harrison, do you still want to remove yours? I don't, I don't think my, Mr. Chairman, I don't think my second would agree, and so my motion to amend was just to refer it back to, like, clarification. Second would agree, I'm glad to, I'm glad to.
All right, well, we'll vote on it then, and get it out of the way. Commissioner Harrison's amendment, to send it back to committee. All right, there is an amendment to send it back to the committee for clarification, and it would make...
There you go.
Commissioner, Commissioner Shoef, would you remove your, it's, it's to go back to committee. All right, and who else seconded that? Okay, Mr. Jones withdraws. All right, we're back to the main motion. Vote on the main motion with, to send it back. Vote on the main motion with, to send it back. Okay, yeah. All right, you ready? The main motion. Yeah. The motion is, uh, what, the motion was explained, and it is, the amendment is to send it back to committee for further clarification. But we voted on an amendment to that. All right, well, well, hey, I'm all for that. This time for a restroom break anyway, so. All right, we are now moving on to budget and, uh, Commissioner Schoof has assured me that this should not take more than ten minutes.
I'm gonna try. Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, uh, item number one, twenty-two, twelve, oh, six, uh, is appropriation of forty-five thousand from the Tennessee Highway Safety Office grant, uh, for an assistant salary benefit, uh, for October twenty-twenty-two through June, uh, twenty-twenty-three. So, uh, briefly, we went over this in, in budget, and this is, one question I had about it that I'm gonna pose, because I posed it in budget and I was gonna answer it in front of everybody. I always have a concern whenever we're taking, uh, grant funding for, uh, salary, but, uh, what, uh, I understand, uh, from the answers that I got from budget is that, that this, uh, this individual understands that, that this is, that this is grant funding, and if it runs out, that this, uh, that there's no obligation here by the county to continue this. So, it's pass-through funds, as long as that, as long as that individual understands that, uh, you know, that was one question I had. So, I'd like to, uh, uh, move to approve this item.
All right, motion and a second, and no one's in the queue. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those like, send.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, uh, item number two is, uh, I think likely to have a few questions, uh, on it, but, um, this is a, approving of the, this is twenty-two, uh, twelve dash oh-seven, approving the budget request, uh, for, uh, LEAP Lottery for education, so this is for the after-school programs. We've had some discussion on this early, earlier. Um, I'd like to, to move for discussion.
All right, motion and a second. Uh, Commissioner Brown?
May I address?
Well, what we need to do is allow her to come up and speak, uh, without objection. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, uh, if you would come forward and we'll just, uh, ask a few questions. You, you can come right here, yes.
I do have my phone. Sorry.
First of all, I appreciate you hanging around this long.
Of course.
And persevering with us. Uh, my questions are, will the money be used, you said that they're not going to an in-service now?
They're not going to the in-service that you guys received information about.
Okay, so what in-service are they going to?
It's called the Beyond School Hours.
Beyond School Hours?
Beyond Schoolers Hours After School Conference.
Okay. That pretty much answers it. Thank you.
Okay.
All right. Uh, Commissioner Baker?
I, I would just like to give you this opportunity to, you know, I know you already spoke earlier, but any additional information that you've heard or you'd like to share that maybe you thought about after you, you came up here?
Sure, well, there was one thing that, um, during the break, someone had asked me about, that the ESER funding is somehow, um, going to impact this program after it goes away. We have not changed the schools that are funded by this program. There's only certain schools that are eligible. This grant application was written before we had any notion of a pandemic. So, uh, we, and we can't change it mid-funding cycle. So, the funding cycle started in two thousand nineteen, I believe, and now we're reapplying for funds this coming year. That's why these funds will expire on June thirtieth of two thousand twenty-three. And so, these funds will not be available after that. We'll have a new application, but it is in no way connected to ESER funds. Um, that there was, it is correct that the reason that we have access to carryover is because there was a surplus of funding and the district was required to provide academic summer camps, which is unusual and is a short-term, uh, program. And so, that did displace our summer programs, but we will still be having the summer programs with this funding. Um, these camp, I mean, these programs are funded one hundred percent by this grant. There is no matching funds. There's no local funding, uh, that comes from this body or any other body that supports these programs. So, um, if we do not have these funds, then I will come back to you with a different request for different funds because we would have to, um, not have the funds, the program in those schools if we don't use this grant.
All right, um, Commissioner Juneau?
Yes, ma'am, I, I have two questions. Um, regarding the programs and the students that go to, into the program, what, um, I, I, I don't understand what areas that, what's, for example, is it just for under, like, poverty-range students? I know there's parents that pay fifty dollars, that'll pay a fifty-dollar fee, but are there, what, what schools are, is this in? And the other thing is about the, uh, the travel expense. Uh, several of my, I've talked to my constituents and I talked to them about the LEAP program and what they felt about it. They had, they didn't have a lot of problem with the program itself, it, but when I talked to them about the, the educational portion for the teachers going to the in-service, they thought that was pretty pricey right now. Uh, is there not an online program they can do? Or do they, is, are they going out of state or?
It's a national conference, yes, ma'am. They'll be going, it's in Orlando, I believe, in February. Um, you asked a lot of questions there, so.
I'm sorry.
It, it's a national conference and they attend it every other year, so this is just the year that they're attending a conference nationally. I would.
It's not online?
It is not online. Um, I, it's, that's a vastly different learning experience.
Yeah.
Uh, I think we've all are aware of online learning and attending a conference is a certainly different experience. And so, they, they do have to attend a conference, but, um, so, we chose that conference. I, I mean, I can't speak to that specifically.
Is it a mandatory conference?
No, this conference in particular is not a mandatory conference.
Okay.
So, yes. And then you were asking about qualifications for students. Um, the program has to have a certain percentage, I think it's fifty percent, of students that are socio, socia, aren't free and reduced lunch, um, or have failing grades. And so, it is students that are in need, that we have to have at least that many enrolled in the program, and then other students, as, you know, needed, can, can attend as well.
And one other question, is it going to cover the sum, i- is this gonna be part of the summer program for the fit, the students that are failing in the reading?
No, that's a separate program.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Boyd?
Hi, I have a couple of questions. So, we all understand you're saying that this is not with the NAA.
No, ma'am.
Uh, what, at what times have you used the NAA? Is there a time set you have?
I can't speak to that specifically. Um, I oversee the funding piece of it, not the day-to-day programming, but I would think that, um, we do our programming, it's a, it's a community-based learning center, which is what the Twenty-First Century Learning Centers are, community learning centers. And so, it's meant to meet the needs of the particular school, and each individual school has their own activities based upon, um, the skills of the teachers or whoever wants to be in that. When I, when I was the manager for this program, we had a gentleman who, um, loved fishing and was home in the afternoons, and he would come, and we happened to be in an area where we could take the kids fishing. And so, he was a community member and we hired him to teach fishing to the kids. And so, that's really the, what the programs are. They're about what's available in the community to give these kids an enrichment activity. There's, it's not really a curriculum program. There's tutoring and homework based on what they're given in school. The other activities are enrichment activities.
I, so I understand that you don't know when you've used NAA.
No, ma'am. I don't, I can't say that we have.
We haven't received financial records, so we can't look.
Oh, we have no financial backing from NAA.
Would you like, if you made a purchase or you paid for a conference or training, it would be on a certain line item and code?
Absolutely, yes.
We haven't received any financial, so we can't look. That's why we have questions.
Sure, I'm happy to answer, yeah. And so, I can't speak, I don't know which conferences we've attended over the years. I absolutely have documentation of that. I didn't bring it tonight.
So, I think that that's where a lot of our questions are, is we just don't know.
Okay.
So, uh, and then I think that in the future, if you're gonna present stuff, we'd like to have like an agenda. We'd like, it would be very clear if we'd seen where they were going.
Yeah, I was not prepared to present tonight. I came to observe and, um, and answer a question I didn't get to answer via email from Commissioner Brown. So, if I, if you would like me to prepare a presentation, I would be absolutely happy to do that, but I, it passed a committee. I'm not sure how it all works. Like, we've passed two committees, and so I was, I didn't understand that this would happen tonight. we've passed two committees, and so I was, I didn't understand that this would happen tonight.
I think in our committees, we've had a lot of confusion because we haven't received any information on what these items are. So, I'm trying to communicate that in the future, if you have an agenda for a conference that's with an organization, if instead of a line item for a journal entry,
Mm-hmm.
we could receive support for what you're asking for.
Okay.
With the. Was that in the committee?
Yeah, the committee has all of the memo information. Yeah, I don't know that it named the conference, but I did, I don't think that we put that much detail into most of our line items. It is all available in the, um, in the public, um, budget on EPLAN, where we have it approved from the state. So, it is all there. I could bring that. I'm happy to share that. I think that, I don't know if we did share that this time in budget or not. I, I apologize, I can't remember.
Thank you.
Sure.
Commissioner Nguyen.
Ms. Brown, can, can you touch a little bit on, uh, in, in the public comments, there was, uh, talk about a surplus, uh, of revenue with the ESER funds? Can you talk a little bit, I think you talked about that in budget, and I just want a clarification there.
Yeah, once, that's really about our, our summer programming. Um, it kind of started from that year when we closed school a quarter early, and we did not have after-school programming, so we weren't paying teachers. We weren't, you know, paying for buses or snacks or things like that. So, we had some money left over, um, and we obviously didn't have summer camp during the summer of two thousand twenty. Then, during the two thousand twenty, twenty-one school year, the programs were a little bit diminished because we had, you know, we were out of school several days. We were, you know, part-time, half kids coming, half kids not, and so not everybody was engaged in the after-school program, so we didn't expend all of the funds that year. And so, the state, recognizing that it was an unusual year, allowed us to have carryover funds. That, that's the only times that we've had carryover funds. Tip, historically, this is not allowed. The funds have to be expended in the year, and if you don't expend them, then they go back to the state. And so, we have, uh, this is sort of a special circumstance that we even have funds available. Um, and so, again, that's because of that year that we closed early, and then because of the required programming from ESER with the tutoring during the summer, that did diminish our, um, need for summer programming. And so, we're pushing that into the summer, summer program.
Gotcha. Was there any adjustments in the, in the total amount for, like, the current year, even next year?
No, it's the same.
To, to account for that?
No, we receive the same funding, because our grant was approved prior to the pandemic, and so our funding has been the same, but we just didn't have the opportunity to spend it because of the change in the world at the time.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner, Teacher.
I just want to clarify, I asked Ms. Brown if she'd speak, uh, sorry, ma. I asked Ms. Brown if she'd speak. So, that's why there wasn't a, um, she didn't come with an agenda. I, I said, would you mind just speaking to it, because I knew we'd have a lot of questions on this, so. Um, um, my one question is, uh, there was a, a comment on the, the, uh, type of training it was, but you said it was in a different spot. I think you answered it already, but, um, is there anything you want to clarify on that, or, there's not, there's not an, an additional curriculum. You already clarified that, too, so.
No, it's just a, a professional development opportunity. I think you, most of you are professionals in your other lives and attend conferences occasionally, and so, um, you will go to that conference and glean information that's useful for you to bring back to your work, to be infused and energized and, um, up to date on what you need to be doing with your work. And so, that's really just the point of the conference. Obviously, I've never attended a conference where everything pertained to me or was appropriate for my work, and so you choose the pieces of the conference that are appropriate. This, this, uh, program operates under the authority of the school district and will use the appropriate, um, materials and information. But, again, they don't use a curriculum in the after-school program that is outside of anything that is used during the school day. So, they're not doing anything different, um, than what would have already been approved. Does that answer your question? Thank you.
Uh, Commissioner Schmidt.
Que, I'll get the hang of this.
I don't have to work.
Question for the parents out there with this program, because there was concern that, you know, in, the word indoctrination was used with different materials in this. If a parent's bringing their child to, you know, go to this program, do they, are they explained what the program entails from start to finish? Do they get, do they get any input as a parent that if they see something they disagree with? Can they go to that program, whoever's in charge of that program?
Yeah, I mean.
And have their answers?
Absolutely, we have.
Questions answered?
I'm sorry. We, we encourage parent involvement. Um, the parents have to come in every day and sign the child out and have a, a face-to-face with the, the school staff, and so they have absolutely every opportunity to express that. Plus, these are voluntary programs. Nobody has to be there. And if the teacher, if the parent says, you know what, I don't really want them doing arts and crafts, for whatever reason, then we can say, here's another opportunity, because there are multiple things offered every day. Um, so, again, there's not, it's really not a curriculum-heavy program. There's STEM, there's robotics, there's baking. Uh, you know, it, it's not, um, I, I'm, I'm not sure what would be of concern, but absolutely, the parent would have a choice to exclude their child from any activity that they wanted.
And if they see wrong, they can go and get that taken care of.
Yes, absolutely. Yes, uh-huh.
Commissioner Becker.
Um, a couple of things. Number one, I just want to thank you for, um, speaking, coming here tonight. I know you've been to a couple of, or pretty much all the committee meetings that I've, that I've seen over the past few months, so I definitely appreciate that. Um, and from, from whatever, everything I can tell, you, you run your program, you know, tremendously well, so I just wanted to pass that along and, and say thank you. She's a constituent of mine, so, um, but, um, but no, but in, in all seriousness, I, I would like to, um, you know, you run the program, you've explained, you've answered questions. Unfortunately, there're gonna be people, you know, watching this online, maybe people sitting in this room right now who, who still don't believe what you're saying, which is unfortunate. But, uh, I would like to ask, uh, Chairman, I believe Commissioner Rogers, uh, spoke in the budget meeting, uh, with his opinion, I think, uh, the other night or last week, and I, if, if he's, if he's willing, I would like for him to, um, repeat the comments he made during the budget meeting.
I can, Mr. Chairman, I don't know what it's benefited, or have to anything. Um, I've learned that there's four different programs, and again, it's ten-thirty for the record, but ten-thirty, and we're gonna repeat what she said for the last twenty minutes. From what I've learned over the past few years is what I thought I knew, and then what I actually come to find out to know, is there's four different programs that run here in Summery County Schools. One being the LEAP program, one's the Twenty-First Century, one is a daycare, and then one's the actual school program itself. It's very confusing as a parent when you have one child going from one school, going into the other school, and you send emails to that LEA, Local Education Authority, and then you send emails to the state also, asking for questions where that comes from, whether it's the comptroller's office, which is where I've been, or whether it's the Department of Education, which is where I've been. Um, it's, it's hard to get those facts together, I guess, if you will, for, uh, lack of better words. But since I have learned, um, and understood and used the, um, vocabulary, I guess, of a grant, and specified for sure which schools we're talking about and which schools, um, monies that we're talking about, and the child's situation of what we're talking about, I've come to understand that there are four different programs in this school, or in this school district. Um, and again, as I said in budget the other night, I'm personally not aware, uh, and haven't seen where there's any ESER funds that's being used, uh, for, um, employee salaries at this point. And now, I do see some concerns on the other side at the actual district level, but this doesn't have anything to do with the leaps and all that stuff of what we're here for tonight. So, with that being said, um, I, I, I have full intention of supporting this to carry it on through, uh, because, you know, I've, I've become educated, I guess. Um, for the person from up on top of the ridge, that's something hard to do, I guess. But, um, I've become educated and, and actually realized that we do have four programs in this county, and, um, you just gotta really pay attention to which school you're talking about and the, uh, parameters in that. And if I could go further, um, the, there, there is an actual enrollment form that outlines the, uh, what the students are gonna be doing. Uh, there's fee waivers that's involved. The, the guidance council, I think, is involved. The free and reduced lunch forms are involved. It's an involved process. Uh, just as I said in budget, don't mind saying it again here, some of the issues that I have, I'll have to take up with the forty-fourth, uh, district state rep. I mean, if that's what we're looking for, I've said it there, I'll say it here. Um, it's the allocation of money and some of the language that's in there, uh, is where I think we, we really need to direct our focus to. But whatever the commissioner's seeking, uh, Mr. Chairman, I'm, I'm an open book. I'll say it again to anybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, uh, last one in the queue is Commissioner Boyd.
Hi, I just, I wanted to just finish up with where we were at. So, we still have constituents out there that wonder about the actual conference and who is hosting it. So, is it possible that we could get that agenda, because I don't think we were really clear about that?
Sure, yeah. Uh, the agenda is, I'm sure, available online. We actually haven't registered for the conference for these people, because we don't have the funds yet. So, um, that conference would be available online. I can find it and email it to everyone, if you would like me to do that. Or do you want it? Are you wanting it now? I don't, I'm not sure I understand your question.
I, I'm not sure what you can provide. I was just waiting to hear what you could provide.
I can't provide anything tonight to you, other than I can look it up and send it to you, but I can't speak to it off the top of my head. I'm sorry.
That would be excellent.
Okay.
And then if you could find out for us, if we have, the county has paid for anything for NAA, that would be great.
Okay.
I know it's not in the, under the school funding, yes.
Okay, I was gonna say the county has.
No, well, okay. We, we fund you, but anything from the school we'd like, we have constituents that wanna know.
Okay.
So.
Absolutely. I'd be happy to provide that.
Thank you.
Sure.
All right, seeing no one else in the queue, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Right, it passes. Um, go ahead, Commissioner.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, uh, just for the record, I did have a couple of questions, but that's okay. Um, I'll go ahead and move on down to, uh, item twenty-two, twelve, dash, oh, eight. Um, this is correcting budget, uh, for liquidation of purchase order, of a purchase order, uh, to, in order to close out, uh, FY two thousand twenty-two. Uh, Mr. Long, I might, I might call Mr. Long to, uh, explain this, and he can do it better than I can.
These are bond funds for the, um, construction of the courthouse or the, um, Justice Center. When we were carrying over the budget this fiscal year, the books were not closed, so we actually took a PO out of last year that was out of this year, so we, um, carried over two little funds is all it was, but they're actually bond proceeds.
So, I'd like to, uh, move to, uh, approve this line item.
Seeing no one in the queue, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like, send.
All right, uh, item number four, uh, this is appropriation of about twenty-five thousand dollars, uh, from insurance recovery for a, uh, damaged vehicle, uh, for the sheriff's department. This is, uh, literally like funds for like funds. We had a, one vehicle that were, was damaged, we recovered, uh, dollars from it, and, uh, the sheriff's department would like to apply those funds to build another vehicle for the exact same purpose. I'd like to move to approve this.
Seeing no one in the queue, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like, send.
Uh, so the next one, uh, this was one that we had added from, uh, Mr. Pomeroy, uh, to, I think that the request was to discuss, uh, five thousand dollars, uh, for, uh, Portland Senior Living, uh, facility. And, uh, I'd like to, uh, move to, move this for discussion.
Um, if, uh, so that I can add any clarity at the beginning, I would like for, um, our pro team to come forward and take the chair, so I can speak to this. Is anyone else in here that was a member of the allocations committee? Uh, I, I can say, and I, I think you would agree, that the committee did a superb job, uh, chaired by, uh, Mr. Becker. And, um, we, uh, spent a lot of, uh, time asking questions and grilling, uh, organizations and people about the money that they were requesting, because they were asking for something like, uh, what do we have budgeted? Close to a hundred thousand, uh, although we didn't spend quite all of it for, for nonprofits. And that's quite a bit of taxpayers' money. Now, I don't mind doing that, because a lot of the services that these people do allows us to not hire, uh, people in county offices to do the same kind of work that needs to be done. One of the cuts, and I, I was asked to call this gentleman by the chairman, was the, uh, Portland Senior Citizens, um, Director, and he wanted to know why he did not receive, uh, the money he got last year. And we had said something to this effect in the meeting, and then I explained to him also, uh, on the telephone, that he had said to the committee that he was moving centers. He was moving from one center to another, which he agreed, he did say that, and that he had everything boxed up and stored away, and they were presently not meeting. They were in transition from one center to the other, and that was after a good bit of the year had already gone by. So, we did cut back the amount of money because the center had been very inactive, uh, had not been active at all, as a matter of fact. And that was the reason, uh, uh, that we cut that one particular agency, and there may be questions about others, but I was familiar with that one. And he was very pleased that I had called him back and, uh, stated, uh, to me that he certainly understood why, uh, we did not give the same amount of money, because they had not been meeting with senior citizens.
Commissioner Pomeroy?
Thank you, thank you, Chairman. Uh, thank you for that. Uh, and yes, uh, I believe you spoke to Mr. Minifee, correct? Yes. Yes, not Mr. Rose. So, Mr. Minifee is actually not the director, he's the assistant director. Mr. Rose is the director, but I spoke to Mr. Minifee, and I do appreciate you calling him back. Uh, you're right, we give a hundred thousand dollars, have for, as Mr. Hyde likes to say, a lot of years, right? You've been up here a lot of years. We give a hundred thousand dollars to nonprofits, not profit giving. Um, so a hundred grand of a, over a two-hundred-million-dollar budget is what we give. Uh, they approved that hundred thousand dollars in July when the budget passed, and then a few years back, they moved to go to October to actually meet with the individual, instead of trying to do it at the same time the budget is done. So, the money was approved back in, uh, July at this last budget. I believe we qu, we cut three, um, three centers totally, uh, total. Three, three people didn't get what they were asking for. So, we spent ninety-four thousand dollars of the hundred thousand dollars. The other two, you know, nonprofits we cut, we cut five hundred dollars off their requested funding. Um, the Portland Senior Center, uh, I think we deemed them to not be active. However, the state of Tennessee disagreed. They actually got the first-ever grant from the state of Tennessee this year, given to a senior citizen center, that Mr. Minifee wrote. That grant was for them to move from a smaller building to a bigger space. They accepted that grant. Um, they haven't since moved in. They've got their meeting actively. They've been donated a pool table from O'Housen. They did slow down quite a bit. Mr. Rose immediately does a horrible job, um, over emphasizing the effect COVID had on the center. Senior citizens and centers throughout the county, I think we would all agree, uh, really slowed down a lot during COVID. Uh, I think Mr. Rose, when you talk to him, really focuses on that a little bit. However, my, my overall point is, is percentage of population to their community, Portland is our highest. So, they have more seniors in their demographic than the other communities in our, in our county. Uh, they, they are active. We also know that Portland, the northern part of the county, um, is not as affluent in some areas, just demographically speaking. Those seniors need that. Now, I would not be as, I would be fighting for this regardless, but we saved six thousand dollars of money that was approved. We approved a hundred grand for nonprofits. We decided to cut three, cut, one, one organization got cut five thousand dollars, the other two got cut five hundred dollars. I can't even do that in my calculator enough of, if we kept that six thousand, if it would save any percentage of the money we spend a year. So, I'm just asking this committee, uh, they would not have accepted the grant, by the way, we've given them the nine thousand dollars. By the way, we've given them the $9,000 for the last, I believe, nine years consecutively. They would not have accepted the grant from the state of Tennessee to move into a bigger facility which has more utilities and more cost, thinking that their budget was going to be cut by over 60% or right at 60% by this body to 5,000. So I'm just simply asking for y'all, I think it's a U center, I see it, it's $5,000. It doesn't seem like a lot to us. It's not a lot to the county budget. But it does basically cover their increased utility costs that they took when they received the grant to move into a bigger facility to serve more seniors.
Commissioner Harrison.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I appreciate Commissioner Palmeroy taking the lead on this and I defer to him because he's a former budget chairman and he knew those figures right off the top of his head. This, uh, this senior center is in my district, uh, personally. And, um, Mr. Minifee, I, I called him the day that, uh, to deliver the news. And, and I want to thank Mr. Chairman for calling him back. And, and Kevin is right, I've been knowing, I've been knowing Mr. Rose for a long time and he's, he can be a little bit negative and, and maybe it's COVID fog, who knows, uh, but anyway, bottom line is, Kevin's right. They would not have accepted the TCAD grant to move from one facility to the other. That building was sold, so they were going to have to go somewhere. And a lot of the money that is being used from the TCAD grant is being used to bring that building up to codes. So now where does their operating money come from? They're, they're like a lot of folks, just like the, uh, uh, just like Katie was, was talking about, it's, it's reduced costs, that kind of thing to come. They've got a pool table. Uh, COVID killed a lot of civic centers and civic organizations, as you well know. So, uh, I, I personally would appreciate it if, if the commission would see fit to, to grant this additional money. Thank you.
Commissioner Winn.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I just want to reiterate, uh, Mr. Palmeroy and, uh, Mr. Harrison's comments. I, I was, uh, actually invited to the senior citizens, uh, senior center, uh, ribbon cutting when they opened their, at their new facility. Uh, it's a lot bigger space. Uh, the seniors are very excited. And, uh, you know, just knowing that the, the money from the state, what it was going to do for them to help them out, uh, you know, and, and what all they had going on to expand their services there. Uh, and then whenever I heard that, uh, they, they didn't receive, uh, the full funding they typically would get, my immediate thought was, well, how's that going to impact them? Uh, I don't think they're going to have enough money to really operate. They have some, they're going to have some, a hard time doing that. So, uh, you know, last month in, in our meeting, uh, we decided to group and approve all the financials. Uh, and, and so we didn't have an opportunity to, to discuss this or even unpack any of it. Uh, so, uh, I, I would be curious to know where, uh, I guess, all the other, who, who else got funding, uh, in the, in the levels and amounts? I don't want to know it today, but, uh, would be good to have that information. I just don't recall seeing that. Uh, and, and I know in budget committee, and you guys did a great job, I'll say that. And the process was really fair and, and everything that's went through. Uh, but just kind of seeing that breakout in that line, uh, item as far as who got what, uh, and then who was reduced and who wasn't. So I appreciate Mr. Palmeroy for pointing out that three were reduced. And, uh, you know, I, I, I think it would be the right thing to do to, uh, to go ahead and, and reinstate this $5,000 to Portland. Uh, you know, because it's, it's a great senior center, uh, and, and these people, I feel like they really need it. Thank you, sir.
Uh, Commissioner Becker.
Yeah, so, so I, yeah, I was the chairman of, of the ad hoc, uh, committee. So I definitely want to chime in, um, Mr. Hyde, appreciate you calling, Mr. Rose, and, and discussing some of the, the, giving them some of that feedback. You know, I've talked to a few people about it since, since, um, you know, that decision was, was made. Yeah, personally, I, I think this should have gone through budget first instead of straight to the floor. I, I don't like us having a habit of just adding stuff to the, to the full agenda the end of the night of. But, um, but during the meetings, the ad hoc meetings, Mr. Rose came in and, eh, whether he's a poor presenter or whatever, but he had all five members of the committee believing that they weren't active really at all. I mean, there, it was, no one on the committee was like, no, 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 they're, you know, it was, everyone was in agreement that they're, that, that they just weren't active right now. And so it wa, it wasn't a hard, even though it's, it's $5,000, it wasn't a difficult, there was no, it was, everyone agreed that, that, you know, that was the right decision to make. Understanding that maybe his, the way he presented himself and presented the reasonings and everything, you know, I, I'm, I'm, I have no problem, especially since it's, it's within the, the $100,000 that was originally approved. Um, even though we did group and approve it last month, the, the detail that was just requested was in the packet. So, um, I can get that back to everybody if, if, if you can't locate it. But it, it gives, it, every single nonprofit's listed what they're, what they had last year, what they had this year, what the difference was, even if they got zero, um, you know, funding this year, which, which there was. There was some that, that went from whatever the amount was to zero, um, for, for reasons, you know, that, that the committee chose. So anyway, all that being said, I'd like to make a motion to, uh, appropriate an additional 5,000. I believe we'd already appropriated 4,000. Their, their request was nine. The committee, I think the committee went with four. I, that, that's from memory. I'd have to go back and look at that same sheet I was mentioning. So, um, so I make a motion to add another 5,000 to get the total back up to the 9,000. That's my motion.
All right, um, motion's been made. Is there a second? A second? All right, there's no one in the queue to speak to this motion. We will vote on that at this time. If the clerk will put that on the board. All right, that is a unanimous vote. And I would reemphasize in regard to that, uh, particular issue that I commend the committee. They did really a very diligent job in, uh, doing the work and, uh, Mr. Becker did a great job of keeping everything together and going through the, uh, review and everything. Uh, but, uh, if, if this is what we want to do, you know, this commission can, can do anything they want to with the votes. Mr. Palmeroy.
My grandmother, sometimes you think that it's raining when it's sunny and 72. And unfortunately, I think that's the way, I wish they would have hit Mr. Minifee up here that you got to speak to on the phone. And I think that would have been a little bit, uh, different of what was going on. But that was by no means a, a thing. I just think last month we were at a term. So I want to thank the commission for voting for it and say that I, I talked to Mr. Commissioner Becker between now and then. So this was not that I thought anybody did anything wrong. I think it just, and thank everybody for addressing it.
Okay. Go ahead, Commissioner.
Uh, yes, uh, Sir, Mr. Chairman, I've just got one item left, uh, that we added to the agenda. And that is, um, approval of judicial magistrates. So, um, I, I asked to, I moved to add this to the agenda earlier. So just for the record, I, we, I, I, we didn't forget to, to do this during legislative, we did discuss it. And I think the motion at the time was, uh, or the idea at the time that was that we were going to direct the, uh, interim county attorney to, to research this, see if there was a, a kind of a stopgap solution, and there was not. Uh, and I've since spoken with, uh, a couple of our, our judges here. And my understanding is that it, this is going to expire soon. And I always ask, I always make the phrase, is something going to break? Something's going to break if we don't do this tonight, because if we don't, um, you're going to have, uh, two judges writing all of our warrants. And that's not what we want. So I would like to, uh, move to approve this.
Second.
Right, motion and a second. Seeing no one in the queue, we'll vote. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I like, and I like sent.
That entered my report.
All right, is there any other motion?
Motion, sir.
All right.